Without further ado, we'll kick off. Welcome everyone to the Schuylkill Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Wednesday, September 13th, 2023. We'll start tonight's meeting with the pledge of allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for roll call, we have present tonight in person Bob Cooney, Martha Majeski, Mark Donovan, and Susan Garette, and virtually online, we have Danielle Jewen. We did have an executive session before tonight's meeting, also on August 23rd and August 24th, to discuss potential property acquisition, personnel, and litigation matters. Okay, acceptance of the minutes of the Board of Supervisors for August 9, 2023, business meeting, all departmental, committee, commission, and council reports as posted and received by the Board of Supervisors for the month, August 2023. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Any comments from the public? All in favor, say aye.
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 Treasures report and payment of bills, Lori.
Right under the wire with our payment of bills, but for this month, we have a general fund balance of just over 5.3 million. It's up just slightly over last month, about where we would expect to be at this time of year. All the bills have been reviewed and are recommended for payment, and we got those checks to print about 10 minutes ago, thanks to the amazing staff here who figured out our technical woes. So, good to go.
All right, I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Consideration of acceptance of treasures report for period ending August 31, 2023. I will make that motion.
I'll second.
All right. Discussion, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. So I did the, I did them backwards, sorry about that. Normally at this time, we'd go into a discussion regarding some subdivision and land development, but we've got a man in the audience, Lieutenant Phil Fitzsimmons, who just came off of a two-week crazy schedule on a manhunt. And we'd normally have that report closer to the end of the meeting, but knowing that you haven't had much sleep, and we'd like to get you some rest, I figured we'd ask you to give your report now, if you don't mind.
Normally, I give you monthly statistics at these meetings, and I think I'll dispense with that tonight. I want to start by thanking the chairman and the rest of the board for allowing me to serve along with Officer Mignona and Officer Shallas on our regional SWAT team, and for supporting us while we do that with the training that we do. I can't tell you how humbled I am to have worked alongside them these last two weeks, sometimes 30-hour days. We've lived out of cars and trucks, but especially because we had skin in the game. This was our homicide, and he got away from the county prison, and we took it personal. Today, I also had the privilege, because we were short of actually being in the woods online with the guys, when we pushed up over the ridge, which is about a mile and a half from my house, by the way, and we pushed him right into the other line. We were embedded with the state police today, and we pushed him into the other line of the state police, took him into custody. It was a relief. I wish I could be present when the girls are told that he's back in jail, because I know that they were very upset when they found out that he was out, and that was on my mind also. But again, I really want to express my heartfelt gratitude to all of you for allowing us to do that. I've done SWAT for 35 years, and everything I learned, and then some, came into play. We worked seamlessly with the state, with the FBI. We were with the FBI two days before, believe it or not, with the Game Commission, with Border Patrol, Customs. Everybody came together. It didn't matter what patch you wore on your shoulder, what you did, everybody worked together for one goal, which was to put him back in jail, and I thank you all for that. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. And I think I can say from all of us, thank you and the team for doing what you did. We're so glad that it's done with and that nobody got hurt, law enforcement as well as residents, so, great job.
And Bill, I just wanted to say, you know, from going back three weeks ago, I just wanted to thank the entire department for everything that they did in court to get this guy convicted.
Chris Appeloni did an excellent job testifying.
I heard that, yes.
And today, I was actually got a hook with Mark Deed, because she was with us that night when we called him the first time, at 2:00 in the morning, when he had the presumed state police pick him up. And it was, I think we both had a huge sense of relief that he was back in custody. So, thank you again.
All right. Board discussion items. We'll start out with subdivision and land development. I think we've got the folks from Polig Builders here to discuss the Sedgley Farms and Select Sites LP. Todd, floor is yours.
I'm Todd Polig, president of Polig Builders, equitable owner under agreement of sale with respect to the 65-plus acre Reeves property, and I'm also the agent for 876 East Philip Drive, representing Select Sites, owner of that property. I'm here tonight, here tonight from our development team are Wayne Layton from Polig Homes, Jeremy Mazar from Chester Valley Engineer, our project civil engineer, and John Snyder from Saul Ewing, our land use attorney. The project...
Give me one second, Todd. Danielle, can you hear everything okay?
I can, thank you. Sorry, I have it on mute. My apologies, everyone, for not attending, but I have COVID, and you wouldn't want me there.
The project is a 51-lot, single-family development titled Sedgley Farm, encompassing the 65 acres. Note, the plan is oriented with north to the right. I have a little red arrow on there, so, as we're discussing that. It's located in the township's R1 zoning district. It abuts R2 zoning on the north and west, East Philip and Wells Road, and it abuts a R1 zoning on the northeast of Dorchester Way. It's adjacent to the Pickering Reservoir. It's access from Valley Forge Road to the north, the 52- to 54-foot wide panhandle, and the East Philip Drive to the west. There are three existing residents on the Reeves property, including the William Reeves House, which is eligible for listing on the National Historic Register. There is a carriage building that has been converted into a residence, and there's a four-room tenant house with two rooms on the first floor and two rooms on the second floor. There's also a five-acre out parcel to the southwest that was split off for a Reeves family member a number of years ago, and is accessed by the driveway easement over the Reeves property with joint maintenance responsibility. That was recently sold by Glenn Mackala, was what we all used to refer to as the Mackala property, five acres. The Reeves family have been title owners and own the property prior to the dam and creation of the reservoir. A trustee received a copy of our September 6 letter and memorandum regarding our understanding and position on the various items that have been raised with respect to this 51-lot buyright plan, which was initiated in 2006 and put on hold in 2009 at the request of the township to consider an open space cluster development that did not come to fruition. Thus, we reactivated this buyright plan almost a year ago. Consequently, there are items from the 2009 review by the then township engineer Gilmore Associates, as well as recent reviews by the current township engineer Paul from T&amp;M Associates. We appreciate this opportunity to discuss our project with you this evening. Hopefully, we can clarify questions, so please ask away, and we'll try to answer.
So, I guess I'll start here with just one quick question. In your memo that stated September 9, I'm sorry, is that right, September 6th, forgive me, September 6th, number 11, let me get to it here, give me a second. It says applicant has met with Aqua, its council and engineers, and has resolved all Aqua's issues, as depicted on the redline plan. Some of the storm water that has, that was planned to go to basin A, being diverted to basin B, to reduce the flow into the reservoir from the discharge point closest to Aqua's water intake. I'm just going to stop there, because your first sentence here says that you have met with Aqua, and you've resolved all of Aqua's issues, but then we received a letter from Aqua on September 13th, and I will quote from that, if you'll give me just a second.
Is that from Aqua or from their council?
Aqua council.
Address me.
It's addressed to the Board of Supervisors, and you are copied on it.
Okay. I don't know if it's you.
This, I can read the whole thing, it's very short. This is regarding the preliminary subdivision and land development plans for Polig Builders LLC, comma, Sedgley Farm. Dear Supervisors, please accept this letter as a follow-up to my letter of May 17th, 2023. Aqua was provided with a copy of the 8723 redline plan sheet after Polig Builders attendance at the planning commission on August 14th, 2023. Aqua's engineers have reviewed the redline plan sheet, and it does not resolve the concerns listed in my letter of May 17th, 2023. I have notified Mr. John Snyder Esquire Council for Polig Builders of this. Aqua is opposed to the plans, including the redline sheet. For these reasons, we respectfully request the recommending bodies and supervisors not approve these plans in the current form. So, there's obviously some disagreement here, and I'm hoping you'll be able to clear them up.
Yep, I hope I can. First, I received a copy of Mr. Shearing's letter, so, to John.
We kind of appreciate the letter. Can you say your name, which is each other?
Yes, very similar. So first, I believe we can take care of Aqua's stated concerns dealing with the impact of our development. We had a meeting at my office and discussed these concerns and how they were to be addressed. I believe both Aqua and our engineer felt comfortable with those solutions. Given the letter I just got today, I believe there was a miscommunication about the timing, because the solutions involved with the stormwater management calculations and facilities, as well as the items to be addressed by the homeowners association documents, the signage, the type of lawn fertilizers allowed, maintenance, and ongoing inspection of the buffer, et cetera, I understood that they would be addressed as part of the final plan process. So, it's apparent that Mr. Shearing was looking for confirmation in advance of the final plan with preliminary plan. So, I will contact Aqua, and perhaps we can address this in a letter agreement, because the solutions will come about as part of the final plan, calculations on the storm water and all those kinds of issues, so. And in the HOA documents, we'll take care of some of the other things they wanted, so I'm hoping to get a hold of them, and we can, maybe we need a letter agreement. I was planning on doing this at final plan, obviously he was looking for something ahead of that.
Paul, is this, is this something that can be done in the final plan, or should, is this something that according to our Saldos should be done during preliminary plan?
The post-construction stormwater management plan is required as part of the preliminary plan application, so the stormwater management items that are listed in the May 17th letter that are of concern should be addressed at the preliminary plan stage of the process.
Yeah, let me, let me explain, because we received that letter from Mr. Shearing about 3:00 this afternoon. We did not receive a copy of the letter from you. We had been calling Aqua, asking for a letter confirming that we were, that the meeting we had in June resolved all those questions, because I was at that meeting, Todd was at that meeting, Jeremy was at that meeting. Mr. Shearing, Mr. Lunning, hold on a second, let me finish. Mr. Lunning and the chief engineer for Aqua were all at that meeting. We went through every item in the May letter. We reached a resolution verbally on every item in that May letter. We shook hands, and we had an understanding of how it was to be handled. We expected a letter back from them outlining that, because we expected the letter to be in Aqua's, on Aqua's letterhead, in Aqua's terms, instead of us trying to define to them. We've tried to follow up with Mr. Lunning for the last three weeks, and have not heard anything from Aqua. We provided Aqua with the redline letter. He didn't get it because of the April or the August 14th meeting. He got it from Jeremy separately earlier. So, I don't think Mr. Shearing has the right information. We've reached out to him. I've sent him two emails today and not heard back from him, but we will get this resolved, because we walked out of that June meeting with everybody agreeing what the, what was to be done and how.
Okay, so, that's great.
So, we need to, we need to go back and resolve the miscommunication, because there's a miscommunication someplace that's got to be resolved.
And I think that's great, but stormwater issues need to be dealt with at preliminary plan, not final plan.
No, what we're talking about is having an agreement with Aqua. The stormwater issues of, we've, we've shown the change in the direction of flow from basin A to basin B on the redline plan. We've given you that. We've said if your engineer wants to review, we've given you extension for him to review it. The things that are the other type of things are that the homeowners association will have in its document a restriction or a prohibition against using certain chemicals on lawns and things like that. Those are the types of things that don't show up on the redline plan. And what I got today was an email saying, "You've sent Aqua a redline plan saying that covers all of our issues." Well, it doesn't cover all the issues. We knew that. There are certain issues that go in documents and not on a plan. So, we'll get this resolved with Aqua. We all shook hands and had, had it all resolved at the June meeting, so we'll go back and resolve it again.
Okay. So...
So Paul, what, I'm going to ask Paul a question real quick. Paul, what are the actual, what are the actual requirements for stormwater submission? Like, do you have, do you have a notation handy on that? Because we haven't received PCSM documents, like, in total. I know that that's normally a nice thick one.
Well, yes, you have. You have. You received them in 2006.
Okay.
And that was, that meant the requirement for a completed application, just like you received the, the planning module in 2006.
Are those still accurate? Or have those been updated since then?
Now, we sent you on January 6th, an updated of the, of the narrative, because it's the narrative that changes. The, the plan itself for the post, for the PCSM actually comes out of what gets approved by the Conservation District and DEP as to what that management is. We've, we've shown, our plans have what your requirements are. Go ahead.
The post-construction storm management plan that was submitted in 2006 is outdated. The stormwater management facility A is now an above-ground facility, previously was below-ground. The plans that have been provided to us that talk about the redirected water, it's only in plan view, so I have no profile design, I have no, no idea what's going on underneath the ground. In the letter, it talks about the waters being diverted. Is it, is it, is that structure now a junction structure, where some water's going this way, some water's going that way? I don't know. It's not shown on the plans. Additionally, it's crossing over stormwater, the inlets that are in stormwater area C. I don't know if they've been eliminated. It looks like there's going to be conflict, plus it looks like the sanitary sewer would be in conflict with the proposed new design of the stormwater management. Additionally, if all the water is being redirected from A to B, we have no idea, design-wise, if B can handle the peak and post-runoff plan, as well as do the loading ratios, because Sedgley Lane, pretty much from Route 23 all the way to the intersection of Sedgley Lane and Eagles Point, a lot of impervious cover, is going to be redirected to B. Is stormwater management facility C even needed? Have those inlets been removed? I don't know. There's a lot of things that have changed over the course of time here that are not reflected on both this redline plan, as well as the, the plans that were submitted back in April that we reviewed. So these are significant design changes that the township is unaware of what's going on.
Paul, you're exactly right, that they will be designed as part of a final plan change. What we tried to show to the township and more or less the planning commission, because they were interested in where these lot lines were, we needed additional easement between two lots, for instance, to bring stormwater, the reranged stormwater. All those design questions are going to be part of final plan. Aqua asked if we would do that. We're certainly happy to do that. They're not, they're not part of, the requirements, as they are right now, are shown on our plan and work. However, we're willing to make these changes, they need to be, but they need to be part of the final plan.
My question on this is in general, do we know whether, with these Aqua issues, whether the plans will have to be changed materially later on? Because the boards asked to vote on, I guess, the April plan as modified by the redline plans. How extensive, if at all, will the changes be after some of these inlets are moved, and if they're moved, will that affect other things? And, you know, the, the board wonders, you know, whether, you know, how can they vote sort of blindfolded, not knowing whether there are going to be significant changes to the plan from preliminary to final? Normally, this stuff is wrapped up in preliminary, and the final is, you know, just sweeping things up, ministerial, and we can't tell at this point, you know, how serious this stuff is, if at all. We don't know.
Right, and, and we'll need to do a lot of homework and figures to find out all those changes. Now, the idea is Aqua asked us to do that. We're happy to do that, but we, but when we talked about it, it was going to be done at final plan. So, the preliminary stormwater management works as is. It's a question of if we make these changes on final plan, obviously, your engineer's going to have to check it. All that stuff's going to need to be checked again, but we're trying to accommodate something that Aqua asked us to do.
I understand that, but what if Aqua says to you guys, "We need you to do this," and you either can't do it or won't do it? What happens then?
I think the easy answer to that is, is what we're doing compliant with your ordinance. From the township's standpoint, that's the question. What's between Aqua and us is between Aqua and us is to, them asking us to make changes in us. Right now, we've agreed to everything that they've asked us to do, so, you know, we don't think there'll be a problem with Aqua as you go forward. That's why we were absolutely shocked at the, at the letter today, and why somebody didn't pick up the phone, or send us an email, or say what's going on. Instead, we get a 3:00 letter the day of the meeting, and from the lawyer, not from our contacts at Aqua, so that surprised us.
Just to be clear, to the extent there's a suggestion that we didn't notify you, we saw a CC on the letter to you, and didn't feel we had the need to...
Yeah, I understand, and there wasn't a CC to you on the letter to me, so that's why I was asking whether that was a letter addressed to me that somehow had been distributed that way as well. Wouldn't have bothered me, but I just wondered what the letter was.
You want to say it?
I'm sure I have a copy that'll get there tomorrow or something.
It's, it's copied. It'll be in your email.
You're actually copied.
Okay, well, it's not in my emails all the way up until 7:00 tonight.
You were, you were, you were copied on the email.
I don't have it.
Yeah. That's why I, I saw you were on the email this morning at 11:20 a.m.
From Mike?
From an associate in his office.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any more comments on that? Questions?
I'll piggyback on the Aqua questions, I guess. On page nine, item 25 from your September 6 letter, regarding the old existing culvert crossing to the southern portion of the tract, that's just upstream from where you intend to build the new crossing of the same creek/ ravine. I think, Todd, you said that old culvert in flood conditions, I think you used the word overtops, or goes underwater. That was a good while back. So I guess my question is, is that considered part of your road network in this plan? I see there, the, the blue represents the roads. I don't see the, the second crossing listed there.
Yeah, there's a second crossing, which is the existing crossing today, which is the existing driveway. That was...
Yep. Sorry about that. That is the, that's utilized today for access. It's a stone road to you get to that culvert. That culvert was replaced after Hurricane Ida, so it's a new, new culvert under there. You may recall that the previous culvert, an engineer had taken a look at that and estimated it only had about a five-year life left, or something like that. Remember, the engineers report on that. So when we needed to do some work down there, we got the permits and replaced that culvert. It was a concrete culvert. It's now a, the, was it a high-plastic, what do you call it?
High-density plastic corrugated.
HDP, yep. And actually, it, it passes about 150% of what the concrete passed before because of the hydraulics of the material. So in any event, it's a brand-new culvert and, and a new driveway, and can certainly act as an emergency access for the future.
If I'm not mistaken, the old culvert, and that report said it was a galvanized corrugated, you went to a plastic, and the plastic has 150% more than the galvanized?
That's correct. Yeah, it was a, you know, the rib galvanized, and it's actually on the plan.
So you don't, you don't show it there, but it is part of your road network that you intend to have incorporated into the development?
Yes, it's shown on the plan there.
Okay, I just didn't see it.
It's not blue.
It's in the blue, okay. Is that also covered by the easement that Aqua gave you permission to use that one, and the new easement crossing where the new bridge is?
Yeah, underneath the existing driveway that we just talked about, Aqua has two lines underneath there. So they were part of the process when we replaced the culvert. They were there, they inspected it, they were part of the, we got permission from them and those kinds of stuff. So there is an easement for those water lines over that driveway.
But I mean, for you to use that as part of your road network, you have that one and the other?
It's a driveway.
Okay.
Yeah, it, we don't need an easement for it, it's on our property. That one's on our property. The other is an easement. The, the blue road there is in an easement granted by Aqua. That was, in essence, a trade-off for the, the crossing of that finger. There was a bridge across there many, many years ago, and an easement for that bridge, and Aqua didn't want us to... And Aqua didn't want us to rebuild the bridge. So they gave us the easement for the blue roadway across the stream way back in 2002, '03, '04, something like that. That was the trade-off. The trade-off wasn't with respect to the driveway culvert. The trade-off was with respect to the old driveway that was a bridge across the reservoir.
So to clarify, the two high-pressure mains that go under the old culvert are actually traveling across your property, not theirs?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's their easement on our property, not our easement from them.
Yeah, when we talked to Aqua, they really asked us if we could relocate our crossing from the north side to the south side over on the stream versus the finger of the reservoir, because it was a lot more environmentally friendly.
I've got another question unless somebody else has one.
I have one just to throw in the mix here. I understand this allegation with the Chester County... Chester County Planning Commission that got jammed up in some way. What's the status with that? Can you explain that?
I believe, I just got an email from Lori yesterday that we need to go back in and make sure that there... I guess a payment was missing for the review of a plan. So I'm going to contact the planning commission and make sure they're up to speed.
Is their recommendation a preliminary or a final, or what is it?
I'll tell you the truth, Bill, I don't know. I'm going to contact them, and whatever they're missing, I'll try to fill in. And as Lori said, if a signature's required from the township, I'll bring it back to the township.
All right. I have a question for either Todd or John. It's about East Philip Drive, and I don't want to get... We can't do this without getting there. So my question is, to what extent, what's your thought about the level of regulation that a township can exercise on a public road? I mean, there are certain things we can do. Do you have any thoughts about how far a township can go in terms of regulation?
I think in regulated any way, it's authorized by the state. I mean, that's such a broad question. I have no idea really what it is you're, in particular, you're asking about.
Where you are with regulation of roads, that's all. You know, it's a big topic. And for example, township owns it. The township can set speed limits and can close it down for festivals and can do a lot of stuff. How far does that go?
As far as the state law allows it to go.
You know, where is that?
Well, I guess you'd have to refer me to exactly what issue it is, and I would get back to you because...
Well, let me just try one. Let's say somebody got an approval for a large condominium development, multi-units for this property. Pick a number, 400 units. That comes in. Does the township have any authority in terms of regulation of that under those circumstances? So would you say, "No, they can connect, it's not an issue"?
If it's a public street and they have the right to get to it, they have the right to use it.
All right. Do you think the township would have a right on that road to limit, say, commercial vehicles? No, there's no commercial vehicles?
There's probably regulations that deal with that from the state. So I would have to investigate that. But I know that there are roads that say "no truck traffic," and I'm sure that that's done consistent with some state regulation of when and how you can do it.
My last example, somebody gets permission for a power plant back there. Could the township say, "Well, we don't want anything, any entrance for the power plant through East Philip, go through Sedgley"? Could the township, in your opinion, do that or not do that?
My belief is that if they have a right to get to the road, they have a right to use the road as a public road to the extent that the other types of things that you've asked about, restrictions on the use of the public road are authorized by the state. So I don't think the township has the plenary authority to determine something like that. I think the township has whatever authority it has that it gets from the state.
All right, thank you. I'm not cross-examining you. I want to understand what your thoughts are. Okay, all right, thank you.
So on page two, number five, and also page seven, number 15, talks about East Philip Drive. It says, "Extension of East Philip has been engineered consistent with the township's SADO." So extension of East Philip. Then on page two, number eight, it says, "Private street." So it's calling it a private street there, "An Extension of East Philip." On page two, number five, it says, "Private gated driveway." Which classification does this fall under in our SADO?
Okay. Yeah, that's a very easy question. Our subdivision plan shows it as a private street, as a street. It's a street that has an offer of dedication in the plan. The decision as to whether you accept dedication or leave it private is a decision that is totally within the discretion of the board. So whether that would end up being a public street or a private street is a board decision down the line. You have an offer of dedication to it. Now, as we discussed with your planning commission, Judge Bortner handled this question back in 2018, '20? Something like '20, I guess, was his decision, when it was raised by Glenn Mackler as to why the decision on Sedgley Farm didn't turn it down for the reason of the street's internal and East Philip being secondary feeders. Judge Bortner, in two pages of decision, said, "No, this is not a secondary feeder." And one of the reasons why East Philip is not a secondary feeder is because it's gated. Now, we have offered you, the board, an ability to control the question of whether East Philip could be considered as a secondary feeder by offering you a gated alternative, an alternative that's up to you to accept or not accept. But the plan itself shows it as a street offered for dedication. The offer of, or the request for a waiver on the red line plan that you have of that section of the property shows it as a gated alternative, which would require a waiver. And those gates would be limited, unlike in Sedgley Farm or Eagles Point, would be limited solely to use by residents, not by residents' guests, not by delivery trucks, but just simply gated to only the decal on the car of the resident itself. So that's an offer that we've made for the board to decide whether they wish to protect East Philip to that extent. And we're willing to do that as an alternative if the waiver's granted.
So you're saying it is classified as a street, not a private drive?
That's correct, on our plan.
And that Judge Bortner supported that, but wasn't his ruling overturned?
No, not with respect to that. His denial of the plan was overturned. But this wasn't a reason for the denial of the plan. That issue was not even appealed to the Commonwealth Court. So Judge Bortner's decision on that was not reversed, overturned, or even reconsidered above.
We'll have to talk about that. Any other questions? Any comments? Danielle, do you have anything?
No, I do not. Thank you, Bob.
One sec. Are there any general engineering concerns that we should be aware of on the plan at the moment that we would like to see updated between now and potential preliminary approval? That would be ideal to see on anything? I mean, right now, we've got a red line plan in front of us, which I kind of find a little unusual, working in this field. You know, it's a little unusual, but I understand what you're getting at with it. But we've also got some other outstanding issues, and I'm just curious. Like, what should we expect to be voting on in October, I suppose? Because it's very hard to make a decision on something when you don't really have the full picture. It's kind of foggy. And preliminary plan, I usually see a nearly complete plan.
Well, this is more than a nearly complete plan. I mean, it's 47 or whatever it is pages. We believe that the revised plan as submitted complies with your ordinances.
Understood.
We've offered a red line plan to show changes that could be made that were brought up by the planning commission that we don't believe are compliance issues. They've asked us to slightly move some lot lines to allow houses to be oriented to a different side of the lot. They've asked us to move the... To actually put the right-of-way of Sedgley Lane in the middle of the 54-foot, whatever it is, panhandle. They've asked us to build the road on the west side of that right-of-way. Those are all things that we could do.
So if I were to summarize?
So, yeah, what I would say is you have a plan submission, and you have red line plans that either you could condition that we do those on the final plan if you agree with the planning commission, that those are better. They don't deal with compliance.
So you'd be comfortable with, like, the clean plan submitted, whatever it was? The last clean plan submission was your... It would be your intent to say that's your compliant plan? And regardless of the red line plan, you could submit it under the black line plan, basically?
Yeah, with the memorandum that explains why we think certain ones of the comments that are in the engineer's letter don't apply.
I've seen those. I'm sure we've all seen those. But, yeah.
So that's where we are. We think the red line plans are voluntary changes that we're willing to do. And if you want to condition that we do them, that's fine. We think they probably do make the plan better like the planning commission thought.
Okay, understood. And to my question, Paul, are there any highlights that we should be aware of while we're considering this over the next month or so?
Well, as you know, I have a review letter for Reeves Tract that was dated May 17, 2023, and it was amended in June, June 30, 2023, which was the inclusion of all the previous Gilmore Associates review comments. This review letter prepared by TNN Associates was based off of the plans that were submitted last revised April 18, 2023. So the plan set that we have and these red lines, the red lines haven't been reviewed to that extent. So some of the different concerns and items that the board might want to offer opinion on are... Let me just go through this. I apologize, there's a lot of pages here, so...
And summary is fine. I don't need, like, a rehash of every single bullet point or anything, because I'm sure we've kicked that to death in the planning commission a bit, but...
Absolutely. Well, one of the items that was a concern was the reserve strip that runs along Sedgley Lane on the eastern side, which would butt against five of the existing properties on Dorchester. Per the ordinance, reserve strips are not permitted. And those five lots that are existing, we have explained that they are going to become double-frontage lots. There's going to be... Sedgley Lane's going to be on one side, and Dorchester Way is going to be on the other. So these are existing lots that are going to be turned into double-frontage lots because there's going to be a right-of-way that's going to go right against, adjoining the property. Now, they're proposing a one-foot access reserve strip that's not prohibited, that's not permitted by ordinance. So that is a concern that I've brought up in my letters.
And our answer to that one is very easy. We believe Judge Nagel handled that when he determined that, for example, the one lot on the west side that has such a strip defining it, he indicated that, or he wrote that the township has determined that the reserve strip section and the reverse frontage lot section are not to be read together. In essence, reserve strips are something that are not used, cannot be used to prevent the extension of a road into another property, is the way that was discussed back then. But the judge said that there is no issue of non-compliance with the one-foot reserve strip. And so we believe that, unfortunately, Paul is just incorrect in his reading of those two together. The court's already acted on that issue.
I'm sure we'll consider both of your opinions, I'm sure. We'll consider both opinions.
Yeah.
We've seen them both.
The planning commission likes the idea that we would not have double-frontage lots. So their recommendation was for a waiver from that section of the ordinance. And that we think is a good solution as well. That way, we don't need to spend a lot of time on the legal side.
I think there's a requirement somewhere that waivers be in writing. Could you throw a request in and send it over for any waivers you're requesting, so we have them in writing?
Sure.
Actually, I want to kind of just piggyback against that. It sounds to me like Paul and you kind of disagree on some certain things. So in order for you to come up with this list of waivers that you're going to need, I think you're going to need to talk to Paul. Can you guys duke this out and then get back to us?
I think what Mr. Pollock just suggested is the appropriate way to do it. We believe that a waiver's not needed, but in the alternative, we'll ask for one. We're not going to agree with Paul. Paul is not going to agree with us, and we're not going to agree with him.
But it sounds like there's an awful lot that you guys aren't agreeing with. And I think if you guys could just sit down and talk about this stuff...
We did lawyer to lawyer for two days.
I'm not talking about lawyer to lawyer. I'm talking about engineer to engineer.
Well, this isn't an engineering question. It's a question of what the ordinance requires and how it's to be read and what the courts have said.
But I also think that there are a lot of outstanding engineering issues, not even just legal issues, but engineering issues that you guys should work out. You have a lot of things that you have not put into your preliminary plan that haven't been approved yet.
Like?
Or are very outdated. Well, the JD for one.
Well, the JD is... We have to provide for a JD. We have no control over a JD. A JD was requested, I believe, in February, and we're in September. And that's just how fast the Army Corps acts. We've given them what they need, you'll get it when we get it.
But on the preliminary plan, wetlands and wetland margin areas have to be shown, and the only way that's established is through a JD.
But we show them... No, it's not. There's not a requirement to get a JD. There's a requirement to show wetlands and wetlands margins. As many cases and as many subdivisions as not, in fact, more, the wetlands are determined and accepted by a report from a licensed engineer?
My question is, is that the plans are supposed to show the wetlands and the wetlands' margin areas? That is established by the JD?
No, it's established by the wetland consultant. It's confirmed and may be moved by the Army Corps if you ask for a JD. You don't have to ask for a JD.
It's a requirement in our ordinance for a preliminary plan.
It is, okay.
Yes.
Well, we've asked for it. Okay.
It expired.
Yes, it expired. Yes, you're right. It did expire. Expires after 5... So, yes, it expired. Yes, you're right. It did expire. Expires after five years, and I noted in your letter that you said that you have solicited one from since February. But again, it's a preliminary plan requirement that a JD, or excuse me, that the wetlands and wetlands margin areas are established, they're established off of a JD approved by the Army Corps of Engineers.
Okay, that's fine. If that's, if you believe that that's a reason to deny us, I guess I can't change your mind. We can tell you that we've done what we can do. I think your, your.
My question.
According to your red line memo, there seems to be an awful lot of issues, not just the one. I mean, that's just one that I thought of off the top of my head. Paul, do you want to?
Stormwater calculations, specifics.
Well, yeah, I mean, I mentioned that the red line plan with the changes, that's, and the post-construction stormwater management plan, again, there's changes. We don't know what's going on.
But right now, we're asking for approval of what's on the plan. Not on the red line plan, what's on the plan. If you want to condition that we make changes to do the other, that's fine. We'll do that for final. But our preliminary plan complies.
So you're saying we should be deciding not including the red line plan. If we want to incorporate that, we can, but your request to us is that we not consider that, we consider the original.
No, we request that you also consider it, because we think you may want to condition on that. We don't think you ought to push it aside, because at preliminary plan, you have the chance to impose a condition like that, that if we accept, which we obviously would, we would have to do for final plan.
It's confusing. We're looking at both plans, part from this one, part from that one, it sounds like. I have a question about the bald eagles on the property. Have any changes been made to the plan based on the eagle's nest on the north part of the property?
So the eagle's nest is across the reservoir, and.
There's one on your property.
No, that's, that's been finalized. It's nonexistent. That was a partial nest that was never occupied, and we've had several years of people coming back, and we've got the documentation that that's not a nest.
I'm not talking about that nest. I'm talking about the one that's on the northern part that has babies in it. I have pictures of them.
This could be news to me.
Yeah, surprised you haven't heard of it.
No.
Okay.
This is on the Reeves property today?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, when you pull in to the left, somebody gave me a circle of the map and said, here's a nest, and there's babies on it. So pull into the left, pull into the property angle off on a forty-five-degree angle to the left, and there's a nest right in the pine trees. That's where I'm told it is, but I'm pretty sure it's there.
Oh.
I thought you knew about it.
News to me.
I think the game commission.
No, they've been out several times, and, because there was a partial nest on the southern side of the property, on the Reeves.
No, no, this is on the northern part.
On the northern side. That's news to me, Bob.
Yeah, see if I can figure out who sent that to me. That was probably six months ago when they were nesting.
Okay.
So.
I'm not aware of that.
Okay. I guess my last question, do you, when this property.
Just, Bob, just, that will affect our plan, but not like it was when it was, bald eagle was an endangered species. So when that potential nest was on the south side, we had to rearrange a few things, but, so, if there is a nest there, we may have to rearrange the plan.
Okay. Now, I don't know if it's on the Reeves or Aqua or right on the border, but I know it's in that area. So.
I would just, I would just add, Todd, I can see them going into the trees from where I am. So.
So your very opening line on that letter was that East Philip was laid out to provide access to the Reeves. It duly approved in recorded submission plan. I guess you're going back to the Voorhees days, nineteen sixty-two. Was there a negotiation back then by the Reeves to gain access? Because they don't abut that cul-de-sac. They're a distance off the cul-de-sac to the Reeves property. The select sites abuts it. Was there some negotiation that they made back then to say, hey, we need a second access and an agreement for a fee or anything to show where this was, where they have entitlement?
I don't know. The easement, the easement was extended to the Reeves property. The only purpose for the easement was to provide access to the Reeves property.
And you're assuming that was for the Reeves, not for the benefit of East Philip?
I, I, yes. Obviously, I don't think there, I would have no idea what the benefit for East Philip would be.
If they wanted to extend a road for their benefit.
To the Reeves property.
To, yeah, to wherever, if they chose to.
Well, I understand, well, let me put it this way. It was a dedicated road to the township. The easement runs in favor of whoever it touches, and that's us.
Todd, you made a comment in one of the planning commission meetings, I think, that after, was it twenty-one years, the township doesn't have to.
The township could not open it, but that doesn't mean that the private parties can't. There's a different right there.
You recently moved that easement over to be entirely on, or was that a new easement, or is that the same easement just moved?
What we've done is, in an effort to be neighborly, not, and not put a road through an easement that's partially on our neighbor's property. We've extended the easement to give us room to be able to put it only on the select sites property.
So the.
What I've explained is, if the township believes that we, for some reason, we can't do that, or the neighbor, for some reasons, tries to sue to do that, we'll go ahead and put it within the existing initial fifty-foot easement.
So right now, it's still a fifty-foot easement, but it's been moved off of their property onto yours? Is that how I'm hearing it?
No, it's a fifty, it's a fifty-foot easement that's one easement, and then there's an easement that takes up about half of that fifty-foot easement, and another approximately twenty-five feet that is on select sites.
So the original easement is still in place. You created a second easement just on select sites, and that's what you're proposing to use in this plan?
That's correct. And as I, as I've said before, if, if for some reason, there's a belief that it has, that the road has to be put in the original fifty-foot easement, we'll modify and do that.
Any other questions from the board?
Did you want me to continue?
Yeah, I'll call, I'm sorry.
That's fine, that's fine. Comment number twelve on page six of the T and M letter. I note that no fence or wall may be built within the legal right-of-way or within five feet of the cartway, whichever is greater, and on Sedgley Lane on both sides, both the west and the east side, there is a retaining wall that's proposed within the right-of-way. So there's, there's that conflict as well.
And, and you have our answer to that, which is, it's already been determined by the court that retaining walls for the roads are accessory to the roads. The section you're citing is the section for people who want to put a wall or a fence on their lot. It's not a road construction one. So from our standpoint, that, what you're citing, doesn't apply to the road that is, the wall, the retaining wall that's accessory to the street.
That section doesn't necessarily say anything about just being residential.
I know it doesn't, but what the court decision said was, when, especially when they were concerned with the crossing there, that the retaining walls that were part of that, that culvert, which this has got a culvert in the middle of it, were accessory to the road.
Well, that, in that decision, that was considered a bridge, the one that's going across.
No.
It's listed as a bridge in the zoning hearing decision, and it also notes that all those abutments and retaining walls, et cetera, that are needed, it was all pertaining to steep slopes and flood hazard district, none of which exist on Sedgley Lane.
Could you orient me? Which decision was that? We've had a few. Sorry.
The two thousand ten.
Thank you.
Again, obviously, the concern about the Aqua, and with, with the Aqua, there are two extensions of outfalls, one from stormwater management A and one from stormwater management B, based off of the submitted plans to the township. Have the easements on the Aqua property been granted at this point for those outfalls?
They asked us, Aqua would like us to have the outfalls down near the reservoir outside of the floodway, but they would rather the discharge from our stormwater management systems instead of on our property, which is back from the reservoir and in elevation that sometimes is ten foot higher. They asked us if we could extend our outfalls down to the shoreline so that they prevent future erosion, and they said they would grant the right-of-way or the easements for construction and maintenance of those.
But the, but those that are off our property are on the alternative plan. On the main plan, they're not.
Now, they're on the, they're on the subdivision plans? On the, on the full set that we reviewed?
On which sheet?
You're going to get in trouble, my Tina, if you ruin that microphone.
Well, actually, they're both, they're both shown on sheet thirteen of forty-eight, extending to the waterline and onto the Aqua property on this, on this set of plans. Do you want me to show it to you?
Show them to Jeremy.
Isn't the, that's a proposed, yeah, that's a proposed easement for just, for instance, a wall. Here's our outfall on our property. There's, there's, there's the outfall.
Right, but the riprap goes down to their property, so they have to be, they have to make their estimated agreement or an easement there.
Yeah, they said they would.
Okay, that's what I was saying, it's on these plans.
Yes, but what we're, what we show on the alternate plan takes this pipe that's, that exits on our property, it takes it down, and has the extra, and that's what they would like. So if you go to our sheet forty-three, that's an adjustment. In any event, they're going to put riprap. For Aqua, they asked us to put riprap as a minimum. If you go to this, this sheet, you'll see it goes past our property, and that's what Aqua would like us to do, and that's on our alternate sheet.
Okay, well, if, I guess, are you going to have that resolved with Aqua at your meeting, whether there's.
They can, but they've already, they've already asked us to do it that way, and they said they would grant the easement.
Okay, so when we get back with Aqua, we'll have that clarification?
Yes.
Okay. There's a concern about, on Sedgley Lane, there's a culvert that goes underneath Sedgley Lane. There's an existing fourteen-inch DIP, and it's being replaced by a thirty-eight by twenty-four elliptical RCP. The pipe extends right up, it abuts against two of the properties on Dorchester Lane. There is a existing outlet structure and some old stone. Right now, the question is that the proposed end wall for that culvert is either a foot or maybe a half a foot off of the property line. From that point, there's, there's stone right there, then there's a gap of no stone, and then there's, like I said, the existing stone in the existing basin. Our concern is, is that stone has to be installed on the adjoining's property, and we're asking that some form of agreement be prepared with the applicant and the two property owners to, to be able to put this stone in, and then establish who's going to have the perpetual maintenance of that stone, should there be washouts, et cetera.
Just to confirm, we did meet with the neighbors. They asked us to replace the riprap that's existing in their easement right now, and so we would tie both of those together. They also asked us if we would change the type of trash rack that's on there right now to a type that is a little bit more favorable, should it get clogged. And, and our homeowners association documentation will provide for a continual maintenance of that new culvert, so that we don't wind up having a problem that happened a couple years ago, where that existing culvert got blocked and became a problem.
Will you be able to have some form of agreement from these homeowners, at least acknowledging this?
Well, I will try, yes.
Yeah, I just, thank you. Again, about the JD, that's still an outstanding concern. One of, a requirement for preliminary plan is a, is an updated PINDY, and I know you acknowledged it in your letter that you ran a PINDY in April, but you, you haven't gotten a response back yet on the PINDY?
Well, we did get a response, and there were several agencies that needed additional information, so Todd, Todd's wetland scientist is providing that additional documentation. As you know, there's some back and forth with that. So until those items are addressed, the PINDY, complete, completed PINDY can't be provided. So we are in the process of addressing any of those comments.
Again, that's a preliminary plan requirement, so it just, you can.
Right, but the PINDY has been provided.
Not the new, well, at least, we, the township hasn't gotten a new one. I, I know you're saying about the clearances, but we don't even have the one that was run.
Okay, I can, I can send you that tomorrow.
Okay. Again, we noted in our, in our plan that there's a driveway on the parcel on, that goes through Belmont Terrace. So on Sedgley Lane, on the west-hand side, is where that Belmont Terrace is, what everyone kind of refers to as no man's land, and there is a driveway that's being proposed for one of the adjacent homeowners to be able to tie in there. We noted in our review that, you know, we can't just put in a driveway on that, on that land parcel, and I know subsequently, on the red line plans, the applicant has still shown that and has said that it's going to be up to the property owner to coordinate everything with the Belmont Terrace for that driveway. It just, it's kind of a, I don't know exactly where this is going, because there's a driveway being shown, but there's really no access for the person to tie in.
Yeah, we're showing an easement so that if the landowner can get to our property, he can connect to Sedgley. That's the most we can do. We don't have any ability to grant any easement or deny any easement over Belmont Terrace. If that landowner wants to get to Route twenty-three by getting to Sedgley, we've provided on the plan an easement, so he can do so. Does that landowner have a right to continue using their driveway out to Valtford Road?
Sure.
Even though it's going to be on a B cell lane? I don't. Not your problem? It's not my, that's, PennDOT has asked us to provide access to Sedgley if the landowner wants to come that way, and that's what we've done.
Paul, I want to back up one second regarding the, the PINDY. Wouldn't the eagles normally be on that PINDY?
I.
Active eagle? Is there an active eaglesness there?
They could be if they, if it's, like they, like Todd had mentioned, they're no longer an endangered species, but they, it could be a potential hit. Bats, bog turtles.
They're protected but not endangered?
If, if, they might be listed, I'm not sure, I haven't seen the PINDY to, to, to note it, but any, any species that could be impacted could be noted on it. There's four different commissions, PA, PA Boat, PA Fish and Wildlife, I forget the other two, I apologize, but.
Game Commission?
Yeah, the Game Commission, then there's a fourth. But those are the four agencies when you run a PINDY and you put in the perimeter of the project, they just do, it's a, it's a quick screening, and you get a, you get almost an immediate answer saying what are the potential conflicts of the four agencies, one, two, three, or four might be hits. And then to get the approvals, Bob, you might have to go, sometimes you can do a desktop review where you submit pictures and things like that, and that clarifies it for the agencies, and other times you have to bring in licensed professionals to talk about habitats and for anything from an animal to, to, to a flower and fauna. Again, I, I comment about the preliminary, or the post-construction stormwater management plan, the confusion with what's going on with these designs. Also, it should be noted that, again, they, they've submitted new stormwater management design, but the post-construction stormwater management plan hasn't been updated. So as I had mentioned before, there's been new infiltration testing done. Some of the structures have, or some of the facilities have gone from underground facilities to above-ground facilities. Drainage areas have changed, so the, the, the post-construction stormwater management plan as originally submitted to the township back in 2005, or 2006, or, or subsequently is, is outdated based off of the plans that we presently have in front of us.
But you do have a new narrative.
I'm sorry?
But you do have a new up-to-date narrative.
We do have the new up-to-date narrative, yes, that was included in your, it was included in your letter, but it should be on a plan. It should be on the post-construction stormwater management plan. The narrative would be included in the report as well as the plan. The, there's a, there's a question regarding the sewer planning modules. They are to be submitted as part of a preliminary plan. In addition, it should be noted to the board that the, the, the system has changed. Now, as represented on the most recent set of plans, the, the southern side of the project, let's say everything going, when you're looking at the plan on the page there, everything to the left is being serviced by a low-pressure sanitary sewer system, which means each house is, is controlled by its own grinder pump. The effluent is pushed into a main, and then it will go, and then once it crosses over the bridge and into the other area, it will connect into a manhole where it will go by to a, a gravity feed. Prior to that revision in the plans, there was a pump station, a, I don't want to say regional, but it was, it was regional for the project, that was, that was doing the same work. The, the effluent from all those lots would go down to it, it would collect into that pump, into that pump station, and then they would shoot it back up to the same sanitary force main. I guess a question right now is, number one, the planning module, we're supposed to get, you know, submitted in triplicate, is there any status update on the current planning module?
So we were, we were holding on until we have preliminary approval to change that, obviously. So we, you know, right now, we.
Excuse me. So, just to clarify this, the prior plans mission, which was the 94 lot plan, we got submitted a planning module for that. We have capacity and treatment, conveyance, sign-off from the Valley Forge Sewer Authority for 94 EDUs. Since that plan is still in play, if you will, or still active, we're going to be reducing the EDUs from 94 to 51, 52, because there's the Maclay. Right, so 52. So the Act 537 documentation we have from the Sewer Authority is actually for 94. We're going to be reducing that. So to not negate the 94, we've not revised for the 52.
Okay. Well, again, this is a preliminary plan. Are they still current? Is the, is the planning module still approved and current?
As far as we know, yes. So, but they were, they were submitted, and if you need that documentation, Paul will provide you that as well.
Are you reserved or have you purchased for at least 52? I mean.
They've, they've not been purchased yet, no.
Have they reserved, do they reserve them?
We have certification from the Valley Forge Sewer Authority that there's adequate capacity for 94 EDUs for both conveyance and treatment for this site. So the current application, 52, was less than 94. Once again, I, we can't remove the other one because, as you know, Bill, that plan is still active.
Has, has Valley Forge Sewer Authority reviewed the revised design yet of, of the low-pressure system? Have they offered any comment?
They have not.
Okay, so, all right, so we don't, all right.
Paul, I have a quick question about the, going back to the emergency access. I remember something somewhere along the line about some feedback from our fire company navigating that emergency access. Was there concerns there that we didn't, that our truck couldn't make that turn?
On the Valley Forge Fire Company letter, now, the applicant did submit a truck turning template for the emergencies, for the emergency access on the, on the plan set that's right there. Subsequent to that, the Valley Forge Fire Company letter dated July 21st, 2023, they noted, and I'll just read it, "It should be noted that any potential secondary access roads or bridges should be capable of supporting apparatus in excess of 35 tons and 300 inches in wheelbase." And I, I noted it somewhere, I, the, the wheelbase for 300 inches is 25 feet, and I believe the vehicle that was utilized in the truck turn templates was under 20, was under 20 feet, so that'll have to be updated. So it's just, but as of right now, what they show on their plans works, but the, the fire company has asked for a larger truck to be, to, to utilize that, so that will have to be updated to make sure that the apparatus can navigate the emergency access.
Did we receive that letter?
So in talking, just to, just for clarification for the board, the physical improvements for the select sites, the East Philip Drive connections are shown on the Reeves Track Plan. Somewhere along the way, that changed. Originally, it was shown on select sites as exclusive, and Reeves Tracks was exclusive. Now, the physical design is, is for East Philip Drive is shown on the Reeves Track Plan. And the reason I'm saying that is because one of these next comments is concerning the East Philip Drive. And we, we note in our letter based off of those plans that the, there's a horizontal radius for when you're going down East Philip Drive and you're turning into what's, the street that's proposed on the plans there, that East Philip Drive is an existing 27-foot cartway, which would be 13 and a half foot, half width. The curvature starts prematurely, so one lane for about 20 some odd feet goes less than 13 and a half feet. So the travel, the horizontal curve has to be adjusted to accommodate that change on East Philip Drive. For people, if, if this connection, or this East Philip Drive extension is, is, is approved, of course, we have to have the right horizontal alignment to make that work.
Just to let you know, on the little packet that we gave you, we show how that works, and it's not on the plan, but it's, it's on the red line, so you could take a look at it.
Yeah, the, the red lines that I had that I, that I was looking at, I couldn't get the scale to work because the, the plan says it's one inch equals 30, and when I drop scales on it, I can't get it to, on the blow-up, so I can't get it to, to scale the way that you're saying. And even when I'm looking at that, Todd, it does look like it starts to curve early. I don't, it didn't look like it, it was starting at the PIPT.
Okay, we'll see if we can get you the right plan to look at.
That's fine, that's fine, I'm just, just noting it, that it was a concern. We also note, I know this was brought up earlier by Mr. Snyder, but we feel as if the utilization of the East Philip Drive is going to become, it's going to become a secondary feeder, the extension and, and the road itself, it's going to go from a cul-de-sac all the way to a secondary feeder. We are asking the applicant to design the East Philip extension, just the extension, to be the size of a secondary feeder, which would be a 60-foot right-of-way and a 38-foot cartway. I'm not asking the applicant to go on to the existing East Philip Drive, that's an off-site improvement, but what we're, but what we're noting is that in the event that there is an issue in the future that we have to go and expand the road on East Philip Drive for increase in traffic, et cetera, we don't want to have to go back and try to, we don't want to go from a 60-foot wide road from South White Horse, neck it down to 50 feet for this extension, and then go into Eagles Point. So that's one of, what we, we've asked them to revise that extension accordingly. Okay, I talked about the whole front edge, I'm sorry. The access strip. Trying to keep this moving, I apologize. I'm just trying to hit some of the highlighted items, it's obviously, it's a, it's an extensive Okay. So one of the, one of the comments that we had was regarding the, we're calling it the Maclay property, that was the former owner, and we had a concern that on previous plan submissions, that there was a driveway being proposed for that property. On that plan that, that's in front of us on that table, the, the driveway connections were removed. And subsequently, on the plan that was submitted on, one of the red line plans that just came from Mr. Snyder the other day, they have now shown a, a, a connection going through. My question will be, has, has anyone reached out to the, to the new owner about the realignment of their driveway? Because it doesn't, it doesn't align exactly. Are they, are they, are they, do they know this?
No, but I will contact them and see if they have a preference for where that could be. Right now, Paul, it's just a stone driveway. So the stone driveway will come up to, and we'll, we will reinstate the stone driveway when we build our cul-de-sac, so they'll have access to it.
Okay, no, that's fine, it's just, it's, it's shown and, you know, it's just, we want to make sure that they're, 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 based off of those plans, they're landlocked and, you know, want to make sure we got that figured out.
And Paul, we are also.
We're also allowing a connection to our store, our sewer system and new gas and electric, so we're going to stub out that five-acre parcel so they can have all the new utilities as well.
Okay. Yeah, I did, I do note that there is, there's, the plans do show a stub for both sanitary and, and water, assuming that they presently have water, or excuse me, well and septic. We've asked for additional plans and calculations about the, about the bridge and the culverts and the retaining walls and the expected loads on what's going on there. Right now, we have just a, a profile view and a plan view of the bridge. The bridge is upwards to almost 20 feet from the bottom of the flow line all the way to the, to the top of pavement, and we've asked for some documentation to verify that the, that the bridge can handle, the, the proposed design of the bridge will be able to handle those loads.
Quick question, Paul, the, the old culvert where they put in the corrugated plastic, corrugated plastic replacing corrugated galvanized of the same size, is that, in your opinion, a much one and a half times volume increase?
We were, the township was involved when that was going through, and it didn't, it did increase the amount of volume. I can't recall off the top of my head, but it did, it went from a, I believe it was a, an old CMP culvert that, over the course of time, just rots away, and, and the bottom rots, and then the sides collapse with it. It was, as, as Todd had mentioned, when it was washed out, it had, it has been replaced with a brand-new corrugated HDP pipe, so it should have a good life and it's, and it is sizable.
So it's not so much that galvanized versus plastic, same size, same diameter, same corrugation, is what gained capacity, you're saying, because of corrosion? Increased capacity?
Yeah, it was, it was failing. When, when you have a metal pipe and, and the bottom goes out, the whole pipe starts to, to crumble on itself. It just, it loses its arch, it becomes deflected, and, and obviously with the storm event, it was completely washed out.
And then, Bob, the other thing is, the roughness coefficient from corrugated metal pipe to either concrete or heavy-duty polyethylene, which is smoother, the, it handles more flow because it's more efficient.
That's water pressure drop. The, the calculations of stormwater that come down into that area, have they been looked at to see if that bridge will now, or that culvert and the, the pavement won't go underwater? Do you know if that's been run?
Well, there is, there was a report that was prepared by Chester Valley, and we prepared, a flood study for Sedgley Farm, and we prepared a letter dated April 5th, 2023, and it's a couple of pages long, and it was very technical in nature about the flood study and our concerns regarding the, the modeling of, of the bridge and the whole system. When you, when you look at a flood study, you, you, you can't isolate yourself to just what the, the crossing is, you have to look at both the impacts upstream and downstream. So as I'm mentioning right now, we, we, we have a letter from April of this year about different questions and, and technical items to be resolved regarding the flood study going through that bridge. So i, i, if, if the question is ultimately, there, there's about a 10-foot difference between the elevation of the emergency accessway and the bridge. So in the event that the water is high up on the bridge, the emergency path would be completely underwater. Culver, road, et cetera, that is completely out of the question at that point. We have, we have a, a concern about the, the retaining walls that are shown on Sedgley Lane. As I mentioned before, there's walls on both the west and east side of Sedgley Lane, and they're, they're, they're close to the existing property lines. To date, we haven't gotten any details, plans, et cetera, for the construction of how these retaining walls are going to be built. And our concern is that with a wall, and then about, maybe about a foot, and then the adjoining's property line, the property line being either Belmont Terrace or the properties on Dorchester, we don't know how this is going to get constructed. Are these going to be tiebacks? Are these going to be leveling pads, et cetera? How are they going to be able to build walls that go from two feet up to five feet within one foot without going on to other properties? So we've asked, we've asked the applicant for some additional information on the construction of those and materials of those.
Is that something normally necessary before preliminary approval?
It's, it's, it's not a requirement, but it's certainly a concern because we don't, if, if, if we, if we get the details and it looks like they have to go on to the adjoining's property to do this, if they don't get temporary or potentially permanent easements to do this, you know, it's, we should, we should know, in my opinion, but it's not a preliminary plan requirement. We're just noting that it's, it's, it's something that's outstanding, that's concerning to me. I have a lot of different concerns, but that's one of the ones that I, I want to highlight. The, again, going back to the East Philip Drive connection, there's a vertical curve. The, again, going back to the East Philip Drive connection, there's a vertical curve that's required, currently it's designed as a grade break, and just, not to dumb it down, but when you're going into the East Philip Drive, there's, there's a 2% up and then there's a 2% down off of the, off of the extension, and what a grade break is, it's an algebraic difference, two, two up, two down, it doesn't go to zero, it goes to four, and the reason why that's a concern, and you put in a vertical curve to soften this, is so that when a car is going up, it catches and it will drag and will bottom out. So, as we, as was noted in our, in our letter, that there's a, we want to see what the vertical curve is going to be for that design in that location.
We do have a response to that in the, in the materials we submitted on the 6th.
That is correct, but that, the reference, or the section you referenced was about driveways, and this is proposed as a street. So, if it's a driveway, that you can, you can get away with, I think, I think it's a 10%, but this is proposed as a street, so you need a vertical curve. So, so just to conclude, those were some of the more impactful comments that I had in my letter, now, now there are, are a lot of comments here that still need to be addressed. I didn't, I didn't want to get into the minutia of every single one, they're detailed in, in the review letters, and I'm happy to address any questions that the board might have, any questions that the applicant might have, or of course, the public would have.
I have one, I know in the Planning Commission, there was discussion, and I think a recommendation, to sort of go off the original plan per our SADO regarding the street width, and I think we had originally 38, right, and then their recommendation was to go down to what, 28?
Thirty-two. Thirty-two is what's required, yes.
Down to, what was the recommendation mark?
Twenty-eight feet.
Twenty-eight, and I've got concerns of that personally, because of the school buses ingress and egress congestion, if somebody does have to stop a car, say, pulling off the highway, and another car goes to go around them and can't, are we inviting a dangerous traffic issue there?
Well, I mean, the concern with going down to the 28 feet, Bob, is that it will, it won't meet the township standards, and therefore, if a waiver is granted, and it's a public street, the buses can go down it. If it's, if a waiver is granted and dedication is not taken, it's a private street, and therefore, buses won't be able to go down those roads. So if we, if we constrict Segley Lane or any other roads in this area, again, I brought this up at the Planning Commission, my concern is that if dedication is not accepted by the supervisors for this road plan, buses will have to pick up the students at the intersection of 23 and Segley Lane. That being said, I think it's fair to assume that on inclement days, and maybe not, children's parents will be parked up on that road, queued up, blinking lights, waiting for their school bus to arrive, so diminishing the width of that road is, it could be a very big challenge, could be a safety issue, like you said, but I think more, I don't want to say safety's not paramount, but really, my concern would be, is that you're going to have a line of cars just all sitting there, waiting for the school bus to arrive, their kids run on the sidewalk to get into the bus, and then all these cars are doing K-turns to get out, so that's a concern, especially if dedication's not taken on those roads.
Just, yeah, excuse me, just from a practicality side, I've built a lot of roads in residential subdivisions, and 28-foot is more than adequate, and you just take East Philip Drive, I think it's 27-foot, so, I mean, it's very, 28-foot is very typical, I'm just finishing a little place right now where it's 24-foot, with houses on both sides, so, you know, through other communities, I would say a 32-foot wide road is fairly extensive, and it, you know, it adds a lot of impervious coverage that we really don't need, so I just kind of throw it out there. The, in 2009, the Planning Commission recommended 28-foot, and I think your current Planning Commission recommended 28, a waiver for 28-foot as well, so I'll just throw that on the table.
I'm not sure who, I'm not sure who, maybe Lori, oh, I'm sorry, maybe Lori, I don't know if you would be able to answer this, or Paul, does the width of our road affect the liquid fuels funds that we get? Or is it just the dedication and not dedicated?
Oh, here, I'll turn off. Can we have too many on at once?
I don't believe the width, it's kind of a loaded question, but we only get liquid fuels funding for roads that are dedicated to the township.
So that's the only?
That's correct, we do not get, we don't do any, on a private road, we don't maintain it, we don't get any money for it. And generally speaking, to accept dedication of a road needs to be in compliance with the township's ordinances.
Any other questions? Public, anybody like to say anything?
I have a question.
Come on up and.
Sure.
We need your arbit.
Wesley Lane, I'm opposed to this plan, I think there's a lot of flaws to it, I appreciate the careful attention that you all are applying to this, because I think it's, it's something we're all going to have to live with. I'm glad it's not a rocket ship that we're going to launch with a manned spacecraft, because approve it and then we'll work out all the details later, it seems to be the theme of the, of this applicant. But, the, the question I have is, is there a township road that you have control of that has a gate of some sort? Does that exist, or is that going to be a new?
We can't answer that.
Okay.
No, we can't have a gate on a township road.
Okay, so this, this East Phillips, it seems like it's, like the line's moving. I came to the Planning Commission meetings and the, you know, the sort of preemptive pitch was, we've decided to accommodate by offering a private road with a gated access and only the residents being able to use it. And then, it seems like that's kind of, let's clear that hill, and then once we've cleared it, then we'll revisit it as needed with another group of people, another governing authority. So, I just feel like the sincerity level is not there, and I guess I, I challenge the idea of piercing through a cul-de-sac in the first place, for the benefit of the East Phillips people. And then secondly, you're setting precedents with gates, with, with roads that may or may not be, you're asked to decide on that, I just don't think, I think it's an incomplete, flawed plan, and I think it always has been, and that's, you know, that's my two cents.
Thanks, John.
Hello, Mike Busia, 845 East Philip. Not going to rehash everything with the Planning Commission, so I'll keep it quick. So the question of breaking through the cul-de-sac, I understand there's an easement that's already there, or has been there since perhaps, perhaps 1964. When an easement's there, it does attach to a public road, so at what point in time does the township approve the access to that road? I guess that's an education question for myself.
That's one for Bill.
When does the township prove the access?
Yes, an easement in place, but attaches to a public road. Is there an approval process to allow for that easement to, you know, break through the cul-de-sac is the question? What kind of approval is necessary for the township?
Well, Mr., I'm going to pass this to Mr. Snyder, I think he's going to say no approval is necessary.
Okay.
I'm trying to figure out what you're asking, if somebody builds a house on the cul-de-sac, they just connect. So, here it's a little bit different, because the cul-de-sac doesn't connect, the bulk of the cul-de-sac doesn't attach to the Reeves' property.
Correct.
But, I mean, I guess if the township approves the plan, they are giving their blessing to this connection.
Okay.
Although, I don't know, you know, there's an issue about whether the, the road is going to be public or private, if it's private, it still needs to be approved. So, the question is whether the township has the authority to refuse the request to connect, goes the other way. So, you know, everybody has rights, you have rights, they have rights. It's a balancing act, and we have to figure out the right balance.
Correct, okay. So then, this easement that is there, I've read some state statutes, chapter 17, section 8, and it talks about the connection of a street. A period of time that a street has not been opened, it's 21 years, there's an approval process that has to happen from the abutting properties, 51% majority, to vote to reopen that street.
That's the borough code, that's not the township code, that's the borough code.
So the state code not dictate, in this case?
Yeah, there are different regulations about all of that, this 51% stuff is in the borough code, and it's not relevant to the township code.
Okay, so we don't make any assimilation to a borough code, which is a state, you know, article, if you will?
This is a second-class township, and I hate when they say that, I thought we were like, first off. A second-class township is a separate code.
Okay.
That deals with roadways and things of that nature, the question is whether or to what extent it applies here.
That's, that's my question, and that I raised to the board. The other question I had was, so there wasn't a ordinance put into place about breaking through a cul-de-sac five or six years ago, could be longer, I don't know what it is, is, and this plan was in place since 2006, is there a statute of limitation of how long a plan can be out there before these new ordinances come?
In this case, we had a standstill agreement, where in order to look in another direction for a PRD, a planned residential development, township and the developer agrees to freeze things in place. So, we are obligated to review this plan based on the older ordinances, and it's been a challenge, because, you know, you got to find these old ordinances and use them, but I think we've been successful in using the right text in reviewing the plan.
Okay, so, so in this case, because it was frozen, there is no theoretical statute of limitations on that, okay? And then the other question I had was on easements in general that need to be granted by, to Pollock from, I guess, Aqua. So there's an easement that's perhaps on the Pollock site, which they have to grant Aqua the easement, I guess, reverse grant. There's a high-pressure water line running through from, from the dam, I think it ends up in Malvern somewhere, is there another easement that we all need to be thinking about from a, from a approval or granting an easement by Aqua that hasn't been brought up before? I mean, it's a question for, for Todd.
Yeah, so right now, there's.
Can you get the microphone, Todd?
Sorry.
Currently, there are two water lines that traverse from the north side to the south side, and they are under the existing driveway, which has the new culvert under it. So those lines are in place, there's an easement from the Reeves' allowing them for those water lines to stay there. The second easement was granted by Aqua so that we could have our new road crossing from the north side to the south side, that blue area, because they preferred that we cross from north to south at that location, rather than where the original crossing was.
So there's no additional easement needed on East Philip Drive, township property, I guess? To the, I guess, to the north of the ball, there's a property there, and on top of the neighborhood, there's a high-pressure line that runs under this property, which I would assume runs pretty close to the, to the ball, to the culvert.
Yep, so, those, as I understand the lines, they're coming from Aqua, headed up here, they traverse across the property, they go along this driveway, and then they further go along Lot 43, the way it's shown, headed back up there.
Okay, so no additional easement, we're sure that there's nothing that's required.
Not that I know of, yep.
So that's it, but I think the irony, Todd kind of said it today, as he builds his cul-de-sac, so he can build his cul-de-sac, but take ours, so, those are the questions I have for today, appreciate your time.
We have concerns there, too, we've been talking quite a bit about that, and there's more talk to be done, and, you know, the, the secondary feeder has been discussed for years about, you know, that streets that are now no longer a cul-de-sac are going to continue through, so there's a lot of discussion and thought that still has to go into that.
Thank you.
Hello, Frank Mercurio, Spruce Grove Lane, comment and a question. A comment is, I have a lot of concern about the apparent disconnect between Aqua and the Pollock folks. Having been in similar situations in business before, I can absolutely understand how two groups could come out of a meeting and have totally different perspectives as to what happened. Normally, in a meeting like this, I would assume that someone was taking minutes or had notes or whatever, apparently not, pardon me, but I'm, I'm very uncomfortable with moving forward with this until this disconnect is resolved, whether it's by Aqua sending another letter saying, oh no, we were wrong, everything's fine, whatever, but I think it's very important that that be resolved before you go forward. My other question is more, more of a, of a legal question regarding homeowners associations. So, as I understand that at some point after the construction is completed, the construction company, Pollock, backs away completely out of the picture, and the homeowners association then has full autonomy over what happens in the development. So I guess my question is, can, can the homeowners association be structured in such a way that if this is approved with a gate, that that gate is there in perpetuity? I would hate to see, five years from now, someone says, you know, we got to repair this gate, we don't really have the money, let's just let it go. You know, forget that, issuing decals is too much trouble, we don't want to do that anymore, we don't get any benefit out of it, let's just let it go. Can they be precluded, can the homeowners association of the future be precluded from doing anything to change the, that restricted access?
Fortunately, that is a very simple answer. To be able to do that as a driveway, it's going to be a waiver issued by the board, that waiver binds the property, and the property owner can't disassemble what was there required for the approval of the property.
I'm confused, you're calling it a driveway now, but earlier, it was a street?
No, the street doesn't have a gate.
So it's not a street? It's a driveway, a private driveway?
No, let, let me, I'll say it one more time, I'll say it one more, I'll say it one more time to make it.
You call it a private driveway in your letter, that's why I keep asking.
I'll, I will say it one more time to make it very clear, those plans have a street, the street does not have gates, we couldn't put a gate on a street. We've offered the street for dedication, so the question of whether it's a public street or a private street is a township decision, you have to decide whether you would accept dedication to it. Now, in dealing with this for 17 years, we've talked about gating, we know we can't gate a private road. So, what we have offered is a gate system on what would be a private driveway, which would require a waiver, so it's up to you whether you want it to be a private driveway with gates, or the street that the plan showed.
So which one are we addressing? You're asking us to decide what we want and change your plan?
No, we've offered, like we have on waivers. No, we've offered, like we have on waiver sets, sheet forty-three, I think, is the waiver set.
Okay.
We have offered a waiver option to the township. We can't grant waivers, only you can grant waivers. We think, and the planning commission has recommended, the waiver for a gated private We're requesting that, but to protect ourselves, because if you deny it, we don't want the plan turned down. We've shown a conforming public street on the plan. So if you deny the waiver, what's approved is the street. If you grant the waiver, what's approved is the gated private driveway.
I'm not following all that up. It's getting late, but I thought that you said that if it's a public, if it's a private street, you can't put a gate on it. You can put a gate on a private street, correct? Why can't you put a gate on a private street?
Because it's a street. Streets aren't gated. There's not a provision in your ordinance to gate a street.
Street, all right, hold on. So if it's a driveway, you can gate it?
Yes.
There we go again.
Yes. So we have offered a waiver set of a private drive that would be gated, and that would be up to the board as to whether they grant that. If they grant that, it's part of the approval process, part of the required plan, and can't-
Both of these-
Answer this question, it can't be-
So both of these have concerns regarding our SADO and the classification. Paul, can you give me the classification of what a private drive is?
If I can give you the definition, I'm not sure if I have it as a private drive, but I can give you a definition of a drive.
It's a private driveway or-
I can tell you-
Oh, here, I-
I think the confusion is generally in the classification of whether it's a street, a driveway, or whatever is in the SADO. And I think that driveway doesn't technically apply here, Mr. Snyder. I do zoning every single day, so bear with me. Driveway doesn't really apply here, in my opinion, and it's a little off-kilter, but regardless, you'd still need a waiver, one way or another, and if you have a street going through there and you're asking for a waiver for a gate on a private street, it might be a little more accurate, just for the sake of discussion here.
That's fine, if you wanna call it that way, that's fine with us.
Just to reduce confusion.
But what he's saying is if it is a street, and it's gonna fall under that classification, it can't be gated.
Well, unless you issue a waiver. If you wanna issue a-
There is nothing in our SADO for a private street.
Yeah.
It's either a private driveway, or a residential street, or a secondary feeder.
Yeah, if the township doesn't accept dedication of the roadways, it automatically becomes a private street.
Right, and-
Not drive.
And if it's a private street, can't have a driver, you're asking for that waiver. I just wanted, to be clear when we're approving things.
If you wanna issue it as a waiver for a private street with a gate, we'd accept it that way. We don't care which way it is, the question is whether you want that connection gated.
That piece is understood.
And we've offered that, it requires a waiver. Gating that by Judge Bortner's decision precludes East Philip from being a secondary feeder.
That's the decision that was overthrown, that you think wasn't overthrown?
No, that wasn't part of what was reversed.
It isn't, when a decision's reversed, isn't it reversed in its entirety?
Well, it depends. We have to read the decision and see what issues were taken up on appeal. If an issue is not taken on appeal, then it's presumably still binding. So you have to look at the opinion and see what was appealed. Let me ask another question. Just hypothetically, if this arrangement were to be made for the gate and the property owners only, what kind of deed restriction would have to be placed in the record to make sure that that arrangement is permanent?
That would actually not even have to be a deed restriction, because it would be part of your grant of the waiver. It would be the requirements of the waiver.
So the waiver would be-
So that only that could be changed by the board.
The waiver would be on the plan, I presume?
The waiver would be on the plan, and the requirements of the waiver would be on the plan, or in the resolution of the board granting the waiver. We could do it, we could record that as a part of the-
Yeah, I think, you know, if it gets this far, I think it should be a separate document, because you've got forty-eight-page plans with notes all over them, these things get lost, right? All right, we can-
Yeah, although it's funny, most municipalities, when you have a zoning decision and so forth, say, "Put it on the recorded plan," so it's recorded someplace. So, we can do either or both, we have no problem.
Any more comments from the residents? Can you give us your name and address, please?
Amanda Petty, Twenty-Sixth Doorchester Way. So I'm one of the neighbors that shares the culvert in question. Just to, I'm sure everyone knows, but the incident that happened with the stormwater was that my neighbor almost died. It was more than just an incident. This isn't, so I'm not opposed to this plan, because I do think it will solve a lot of stormwater issues that the Doorchester neighbors and the people on, we're calling it Sedley Lane, are having right now from all of the runoff from this development and all of the runoff. It's not being properly maintained. No one is maintaining the road, it's full of potholes, downed limbs, the Belmont Terrace is a disaster, all of the sticks clog the culvert, the culvert backs up, and floods my neighbors, thankfully not mine, 'cause I'm a little bit higher, but floods the yards of the three neighbors to the right of me, and my senior neighbor was trying to unclog it during the hurricane, and fell in, was trapped, was being sucked into the culvert, so with so much force that it sucked his boots off. My husband had to jump in, which was very stupid of him, but he did anyway, and pull him out. So that is the incident that happened. This is a very serious issue, and I do think, I've met with Todd multiple times, I've met with Polig, I'm in the construction and engineering field, I think we have come to a reasonable resolution for excavating that culvert, adding new riprap, making it a little bit safer, as well as his solution to add drainage on the road to move that away from our homes and our development. I think it's a good solution. I have seen the other plans, they were terrible. We're back down to fifty houses, I think, out of bad options, this is the least bad option we've seen, as nice, single-family homes that will add to the value of our community. That being said, I, it stinks to have to break through a culvert, it does, but it's also terrible for our neighbors to have the entire burden of these houses in our backyards. East Philip is a road, it's a driveway, it's the front yard, they have sidewalks, they have a road, it's not their private space. This is our backyards where our kids play. And I just, it's, I am suggesting, as a mother of two little kids who play in the backyard every single day, I know there's this whole thing back and forth between the road width, but the twenty-eight feet, I also build roads every day. I work at a local university, I do this constantly, I go before boards for work, I don't see a problem with twenty-eight feet. We do it all the time. I have roads that are nineteen feet, and box trucks and deliveries go past each other every single day, as well as, you know, we don't have legitimate school buses, but we have other buses that transport students. There's no issue, there's never been a backup, there's never been anyone like queuing, and people can go around them just fine. I sent Laurie, I don't know if everyone has seen them, my printer broke, I was going to print them out, so I'm really sorry, I just have the world's tiniest image, but if we keep this road at thirty-eight feet, with the retaining wall as close to my property as is legal, this is what it looks like now, and this is what it will look like, with an image of a child and a box truck. I just, like, want everyone to see this. So, I think, Paul, you have these images?
Yes, I do.
So if we make the road less wide and push it back from our neighborhood, on the west side, there's a fifty-eight-foot buffer between the road and those homes. We have no buffer, they have Belmont Terrace, we have nothing. So this will be right on our property. There's fifty-eight feet of wooded, treed area on that side. Again, Doorchester has a fence, if that. And then earlier in the meeting, there was a comment about not having a fence within five feet of a property. I was wondering if someone could explain that to me, because if this does go through, I'm going to be putting up a very big fence, and I wanna make sure that that's fine.
We can't approve it tonight.
No, I don't, I wanna make sure that somehow, like, when this happens, I'm not missing something, that now the Doorchester neighbors are no longer allowed to put up a fence to protect our children.
The comment has to do with a fence or a retaining wall within the right-of-way, so that's why, with Sedley Lane being a certain size, they're putting a retaining wall and a fence or guide rail, et cetera, within the right-of-way. That was the comment.
The pipe's not gonna affect the edge of my property.
No.
Okay.
No, that is, it talks specifically about the cartway.
Okay. And my last comment is, I think the gate is a great idea, we, I went to all, like, most of the planning commission meetings, if not watched every single one of them, the cut-through for the traffic will absolutely happen. Twenty-three is a nightmare, White Horse is a nightmare, everyone is trying to avoid that intersection. I think the gate is great, I'm not even going to pitch a huge fit about the fact that all the deliveries will now be in my backyard, box trucks, Amazon, UPS, FedEx. My only ask is that they can exit through, if, like, I know you can't enter, because it was supposed to be like the RFID on the side of the card, but is that the case for exiting as well? Because, again, it's not, it's not fair to, I know NIMBY not in my backyard, but like, that screws us, and it saves them. So I think to share the burden of this project, sure, they can't enter, but can they at least exit? And then, so they're entering one side, so it's one flow of traffic for all these deliveries, 'cause Amazon comes about fourteen times a day to everyone's house anymore.
The numbers are not making a cut-through from twenty-three.
Because you can't come in without the code.
They're gonna be coming off of twenty-three.
See, we have to do, we're gonna do one at a time. I'm sorry?
So, I think what, and I had a similar question, if access can be given to exit the property without requiring some type of card, or whatever the word is that you used, then it will encourage a cut-through, right? Everybody could come off twenty-three, knowing they can cut the corner and go down. And did we finish a traffic review of the intersection of East Philip and White Horse?
Or we can put a gate at both sides, I don't know.
Didn't we request that?
Put a gate at the T, or something.
We did, we did request the, what's going on there with the number of travels going through, et cetera. I think that was listed also in the safe highway engineering review as well, just what are going to be the impacts at South White Horse and East Philip Drive intersection.
We'll have to talk about that, too.
And, I mean, the last thing I'm gonna say is that if, and again, if East Philip is maintained, it's just, it's taking the burden away from them and just placing the burden somewhere else. Like, there will still be burden, and now it's, okay, they're safe, but now our development is going to have, you're not gonna be able to turn left onto twenty-three, because we already talked that to death at the planning commission. So everyone will turn right, and they'll turn right again into our development, they'll make a U-turn, and then they'll turn right or left out of our development. It happens all day long already, from the development across the street. We're one of the only developments that doesn't have two points of access, so we are allowed to turn left or right, 'cause we don't have a choice, there's nowhere else for us to go. So, across the street, there's a cop that sits constantly outside of the intersection right now, and pulls people over every five minutes for illegally turning left in the mornings during the zone, they just ignore it. And, sure, great, so we could put a cop there, but then they're just gonna turn right, do a legal U-turn in our development, and then turn left, 'cause it's legal out of our development. So, that's all, thank you.
Thanks.
I'd just like to add a comment to the Doorchester people. This assumption that the fifty-two homes is a fix, a fix, so that everyone else has to accommodate, either Doorchester loses, or East Phillips loses, I mean, breaking through a cul-de-sac where people, you know, they selected that for the safety, there are no sidewalks over there, by the way. You know, there is another option, and it's shrink this project down, so it fits the envelope that you invested in, you took the financial risk. It's not up to our township to accommodate, you know, in perpetuity, in ways that cause, you know, inconvenience, if not risk. I mean, taking a left out of East Phillips is flat-out dangerous, and it's not about pruning bushes, it's the contour of the road itself. So, you know, you don't need to lose, the East Phillips people don't need to lose, you know, the Polig company can reimagine this project to fit the actual envelope of the property that they invested in, that's it.
Well, there's safety concerns on both sides that we're looking at, so I can appreciate what you're saying.
Karen Hilliard, Nine Twenty Valley Forge Road. I just had a question, if someone could clarify, the red line driveway access from Nine Twenty Valley Forge onto Sedley, there was a question of, can that address still use the existing driveway if it ends into a deceleration lane? And then I heard multiple, "Not my problem," so I wanted to know if you could clarify whose problem it would be? Is that a PennDOT issue, or a Nine Twenty Valley Forge road?
It's not a, it's not a legal problem with PennDOT. PennDOT has asked us to provide an easement so that that person can, if they don't want to exit at that spot, can come onto Sedley and exit, and that's what we've done. They, PennDOT's asked us to provide that accommodation.
So there's no way that PennDOT can deny us-
PennDOT can't shut down a new driveway now.
Okay.
So, I just have to ask, is that easement crossing the Doorchester Way paper road that's in there?
Belmont Terrace.
Or Belmont Terrace paper road?
We had a study done, and it's unclear who the owners are. Somebody put in a statement of adverse possession, someone named Rossi in the eighties.
I think he's just, I think you're just asking if the easement is being shown going across Belmont Terrace?
Yes.
I think the easement is just being shown on their property. If they want to connect it to their property, they would have to get an easement or access to Belmont Terrace.
But, to follow up on that, there's, you're saying that there's no known owner?
Well, yeah, I mean, we looked into it, someone could go to court and ask a judge to, you know, declare it to be yours or somebody else's. There's a subdivision plan from somebody, Ray Brown, from the twenties or thirties or something, and it was partially constructed and partially not constructed, so this area is of unknown ownership.
Okay.
Now, it can be resolved, if this is what courts are for, but it would cost a lot of money to figure out whose it is. I think if you were to, you know, put your driveway in, I'm not sure there's gonna be anybody who's gonna object, but there could be, I don't know.
We're not telling you to do that.
And, and I think the Rossi's are gone, were they former owners of your property?
Russo was.
Russo, there you go, Russo.
So it was Russo, and then Sadoo, and then us.
Well, in the eighties, the Russos filed a paper in court saying, "We own this."
Okay.
Now, I don't think they took the next step to file a lawsuit for adverse possession, which is expensive, but they have at least put a marker in, and I don't think they went to the board of assessment to say, "We own this," 'cause you get your property reassessed and your taxes go up. So it's a ball of confusion, unfortunately. It can be resolved, but it would be expensive.
Okay, so to follow up on that, so Paul had brought up the issue of the retaining wall being potentially too close to, like, I guess, you-
The retaining walls being within the cartway of Sedley Lane, within the cartway right of way.
Right, and saying that they may need easement to get from Belmont Terrace to Sedley, but if no one knows who owns Belmont, wouldn't that be an issue of how to build that retaining wall?
Yes, and that's why I listed it, we don't have any design information on the retaining walls at this point, so that's, that is a concern that's listed in our review letter.
And my other concern is, back in that property now, it's very nice and dark, and not a lot of light pollution, I just would like to consider as minimal amount of traffic, streetlights, as possible, to minimize the amount of light pollution. That's all.
I just wanted to give you one other tip, and that is, since you are in the chain of title from Russo, if Russo, in essence, did satisfy a claim to Belmont, you need to look in your predecessor's deed and your deed to-
to look in your predecessor's deed and your deed to see whether there was a, together with any right we have in, in Belmont Terrace, because you may be the party that has the right to control that.
Again, in terms of streetlights, it's, it has been noted that nobody really wants to light up that driveway. So, proposed right now is a streetlight at the intersection of Valley Forge Road and then all the way through the property to the first intersection would be the next light. And then we also said that it's the supervisors kind of make the decision if they want, if you don't want streetlights, we won't put them in. My suggestion is we have streetlights at the intersections and the end of the cul-de-sac that are appropriate and have downlights. So, but, you guys make a decision on streetlights, I go along with, with every way.
Yeah, the ordinance is that it, it's, we put them in where you want them.
Who would pay the electricity for those?
Well, if it's private street, that would be paid by the homeowners association. If it's a public street, it may still be the homeowners association. It depends on what, how that's negotiated at the dedication.
Okay.
Any other public comment? See if you can give us your name and address.
Hi, Sue Aaronshield, 130 Valley Park. My only question was about the storm management or the submission that was made in 2006 of how you deal with storm management. Is that correct? I'm not sure if I'm putting it right, but, sorry.
Uh, no, not really. What, stormwater management is a stepped process. We design to your, to the township ordinance. We then go and get NPDES permit through the county district and DEP, and that's where the final plan rests. The stormwater management plan, it, the PCSM, it's post-construction stormwater management plan, that's really finalized on what comes out of that final permitting through the state after we've gone through here. And it tells, it, it establishes what the facilities are that need to be maintained and who's going to, how they're going to be maintained in the future. So that's why there's a narrative of it, which deals with the who and, and how, and there's a plan of it as to what they are.
Okay. My, my only concern was that the calculations, are they based on the 2006 rain or current? I mean, all that. Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay. Yep, we're going to jump back into the agenda. Thank you for coming out and answering any questions.
We need to discuss the extension.
Oh, yeah. Dates, dates, dates.
Everybody get out your calendars. We've got to talk about a date between, before October 27th to get together again.
So.
So, so everybody knows there's a, I announced the decision date to the, to the public. So for anybody that's, that's leaving, you guys, before you go, we've, we're going to discuss a date for a final decision on this. It won't be at our next business meeting. We're going to have to probably put a date together for a special meeting after that business meeting.
Bob, Bob, one second. Um, excuse me, could, could we all quiet down a sec?
Hey, guys.
I can't, I can't hear a word he's saying, and he's right next to me. Thank you.
I'll get to use this. So what I was saying is, we're going to have a special meeting sometime in October. We're discussing that now. So for anyone that would want to attend, keep your eyes and ears open. It won't be at our normal business meeting on the second Wednesday in October. It'll be probably within the next two weeks after that.
So, the, the dates that, the dates that the applicant have proposed are October 9th, 16th, 17th, 18th, 23rd, 24th, and 25th.
I can do any of those except for the 9th.
Let me write those down again.
The township has conflicts already on... The 16th, we already have a meeting, so we can't do that day. The 18th as well is out. So how does everybody, what about, Martha gave me dates that she sent. What dates are you not here?
Just the 9th.
Okay.
I will be here, but I will be extremely jet-lighted.
It could be fun.
The 23rd, you have actually four dates that week because you also have your work session where you could advertise that.
We do, but we also have budget meetings we have to schedule tonight, unfortunately.
Okay.
What about the 17th for everybody's schedules?
Do you have my list there?
Yeah, I have your list.
Am I good on the 17th?
You are good the 17th. Only the red ones were not good for you, right?
Correct.
17th works for me.
Seventeen.
Tuesday, October 17th? Mark, does a Tuesday work for you?
I'm working through my various accounts.
Okay.
I, I think that works for me, too, Lori.
Okay, great.
That one, that one works.
That one's good for you?
I don't know. If I can, if I block it off, yeah.
You have to stop me.
Good to go.
Okay, so Tuesday.
So, what we said.
You're okay?
So Tuesday, October 17th.
Wow, that was easy. So how about a time? I would appreciate it if we could do it not at 6:00.
7?
7:00 is fine for me.
Okay. All right. So Tuesday, October 17th at 7:00.
And we've indicated that we do pay the other time.
Perfect.
Thank you for the consideration of moving it from July.
Sure.
I was going to ask, would the drive all through the night have to be at 9:00 and so that it would be the next morning?
Thank you, guys, for moving along. Quick to find the agenda. We are at...
There you go, you got it.
I had a... Old business, we have none. New business. Appointment of Valentina Mitterer, I got it right, of the, to the position of Assistant Township Manager effective Monday, September 11th, 2023. I will make that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Public comment? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Welcome aboard.
And she only had to sit through all of that to get it.
My initiation.
You got to see a little fireworks. Okay, consideration of acceptance of 2024 Minimum Municipal Obligation MMO for the Schuylkill Township Non-Uniform Pension Plan and Police Pension Plan in the amount of, and I'm going to turn this over to Lori to discuss a little bit.
Get myself together here after that for a second, but, so it's a little bit more complicated of conversation this year than it's been in the past because we've got options, not great ones, but we've got options this year that we don't usually have for the MMO. So we're required to adopt this, and we have to do it at this meeting. This is the minimum municipal funding that we have to put into the pension plan. So for 2024, we're seeing a pretty sizable increase in our funding requirements for both the uniform and non-uniform plans, and that's due to across-the-board losses in 2022. Everybody was at about 15% or more. Our pension funds, we saw asset losses of about, you know, close to $2 million in our pen, in our police pension fund, and non-uniform about $700,000. So we have to make up for that. So as a result of having to make up for that, our funding for 2024 is going up. So the question for the board tonight is, we have two options that have been presented to us by our actuary. One is a smoothing option, which is normally how our MMO is calculated. That's traditionally how you see the number come up. The other option is to go with market value of assets. It's a higher number, but that will set us up better in the long run. So for 2024, the funding, the MMO based on smoothing for the police pension plan would be $214,412. For the non-uniform, again, the smoothing option, would be $76,348. The market value of assets for the police pension plan would be $365,881. The market value of assets for the non-uniform would be $123,423.
Now, the losses, that much?
Uh, here, Mike.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, the interesting...
The losses were that much?
Yes.
I was surprised, too, because the, the market hasn't shown that much, as, as much as it went down, but...
We're also a whole year behind, so all of these numbers are based off of full, as of January 1st, 2023. So that's how they do their actuarial calculations. But yeah, there were, and it's not just us, I mean, this is everybody, and we're in...
We're in good shape.
The concern is that we will fall behind. So here's my suggestion. Whatever we put on this piece of paper, we have to do, and we have to do one of those two options. There's no flexibility there. What we can do is lock in, we've set our MMO at the smoothing levels, so the lower numbers, like we do every year, but we budget for the higher numbers. And that gives us the flexibility that we can wait and see how the pension plan has done and how we have done. And that way, if we have additional money in our budget, if we can do it, we should put in the higher number, but commit to the lower.
So we hit the minimum, we have flexibility to go more if we have to.
Correct. And that sets us up well. I would recommend, based on my conversation with our actuary, that if at all possible, we do the higher number, but this way it just lets us budget, it lets us plan a little bit more conservatively. I'll budget for the higher numbers, but this just gives us that wiggle room should something happen throughout the course of the year that, when it comes time to pay the MMO.
So we're committing to 290 total between the two. Could go as high as 500 or close to it.
Yeah.
If, if we're 78.
That's right.
You know, I think, if I recall correctly, and this is before any of you guys were on the board, I think we were in this situation back in like 2012 or 2010, or 20, I'm sorry, 2012 or 2013.
Is that when we adjusted our goals to a little bit lower level?
Yeah, and I think that that's what we did. I think we kept it at the smoothing, budgeted higher, and I think there was one year where we just kind of did in-between because we ended up with, I don't want to say leftover money at the end of the year, I never like saying that, but we spent less than we budgeted for, and we had that money, and it was, it just made sense to do it.
Right.
But I think we only had to do that once in the entire time I've been on the board.
Yeah, and we've had pretty good success, and our, our pension plans, our pension plan manager is phenomenal. We do really, really well with it. It just was an unprecedented time, that all pension plans across the board lost a lot of money.
And they do the actuary, the, these reports, what, is it every two years or every three years?
Correct, every two.
Every two years?
I'd like to hear some more details of how that happened, because when I look at my own investments in the market, everything's doing well and going up. I know they hedge some things and balance it out. It must have taken a hit in a way that I don't understand yet, but I think our next meeting, we'll have a lot of questions for them of how that happened and what they're doing in the future.
Yeah.
So, all right, I'll make the motion that we, give me those numbers again. I'll make the motion that we add to our budget smoothing for the, for the MMO of...
Pension plan amount is...
Pension plan amount of 76.
Uh, the police pension plan is 214,412.
So that number, and...
And the non-union is 76,348.
So how do I phrase that motion? Did I make the...
You're good, you can just go ahead and...
All right, you got it. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Oh, discussion, questions? Yeah.
Does that catch you up also?
We aren't, we're not really behind at this point.
Oh, I thought you had said you were...
We're talking about being conservative so as to not get behind.
Okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Bye.
Discussion impossible. Motion to approve transfer of funds from Open Space Commission account at S&amp;T Bank to Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust, otherwise known as Pliget. I will make that motion. Hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We all know what that is, and it's been doing very well, so any concerns, questions from the public?
I can explain the, I'll wait till the next one.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Authorization to close the account at S&amp;T Bank. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Do you want to do some explaining now, or?
If you need it.
No, I don't think we do.
It was, it was a dormant account, so we're going to just move the money.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Authorization to advertise and sell the following equipment on municipal to the highest bidder, which consists of a 2008 Ford F-550 truck with Western nine-foot power angle snow plow, 2013 Galleon dump body with Western eight-and-a-half plow angle snow plow, or eight-and-a-half foot power angle snow plow, Kubota M9000 frame and front bucket, as well as a Frontier WC 1205 wood chipper. I will make that motion.
I'll second.
Discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye. Boy, Nick's cleaning out the garage. Does he want to come to clean out my garage?
We might have to take a look at municipal on that one. Consideration approval purchase of a 2023 Ford Mustang Mach-E in the amount of $57,503 minus the trade-in value of $10,000 for a total of $47,503. And I will make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion, comments? And this is for a car that we almost got a couple months ago that was sold out from under us after we had it locked in, but we did find another, so...
Has been the never-ending story of looking for a car.
Hopefully tomorrow, when we go to place the order, it will still be there, unlike the last time.
So Bob, I just wanted to mention something. I, I understand that I, we, we all want an electric vehicle that's been a, a focus for the township, that's been priority for our environmental advisory committee, but we, I, I just want to make sure we've investigated all options. My understanding is the Ford Mach-E is the only one that's CoStar's approved, but I feel like it's worth, because we're paying this, for this with taxpayer money. Um, you know, have we exhausted all other options? I mean, there are other all-wheel-drive, reliable electric vehicles, so maybe Lori could speak a little bit to the work that's gone into making sure that we're getting a good, you know, you know, a, a car with, with value and we're, we're spending taxpayer money wisely?
Yeah, absolutely. It's certainly not the only, to your point, it's not the only CoStar's electric vehicle. It is the only CoStar's electric vehicle that I can get, that is available, that is all-wheel-drive and is within our budgetary constraints, although this one is slightly over-budget. The other options that are available that are on CoStar's, I think there, there might be some Nissan, Nissan options, but are not of it. I, I can tell you that I've spoken to every, I think, every dealership that's on the CoStar's list, and this is the only vehicle, this is the cheapest available on lot electric vehicle that is not an offensive highlighter orange color.
And I know I've been at EAC meetings for Lori's talk, but, well, she's been doing to try to get this vehicle, so I do think she's put a lot of time into this.
Thank you. Yeah, it has been, it has been a saga.
Being the owner of a 2021 Mach-E, and I love it very much, I've also been reading a lot of things lately about the Mach-E. The prices have come down drastically, and I've also just discovered that the 2021 Mach-E is actually the best one they've made so far. And the 2023... made so far. And the 2023 has fewer bells and whistles than the 2021 does, um, which I, I just learned yesterday, and I, um, did some research into that. And, and like I said, the prices, I mean, my car is worth way less than I paid for it a year ago, but I got a great trade-in value on the car I traded in, so I don't know-
Yeah.
-how that works. But anyway, um, I, I know that you, you have dutifully looked for this car. Um, but I've also read that there were, there was a lot of inventory. So, and I don't know if you're allowed to consider used cars either.
No.
Okay.
Unfortunately, the, uh, the CoStar's limitations only go for new vehicles.
Correct. We can't buy used vehicles, and then the Pennsylvania state procurement rules require that we, you can only qualify, you can go, only be on a CoStar's list for a vehicle if it's a certain percentage manufactured in the United States. So we're highly limited. The other issue that we've been facing is that, I mean, you, you pay less money on CoStar's, that's the whole point. As government purchasing, we're not supposed to pay over market value. Um, so in order to qualify for those contracts, I mean, dealerships want to sell the cars for more money. So there aren't very many available that are, there might be 20 Mach-Es sitting on a Ford lot, and only four of them qualify for CoStar's because they have to order them off of the contract.
Is it the premium or the select?
No.
The trim?
No, I, uh, it is whatever, I don't need any bell, we need no bells and whistles.
Well, no, no, I mean, that depends. If, for the price, it better be the premium.
It's a Ca-, it's a Calif-
Which is the mid-level.
California. Yeah, it's a-
Danielle, let me interrupt and say, Danielle, does that answer your question-
Thank you.
Based on the limitations and, uh, with CoStar's, we're, we're pulling the trigger on this one? Uh, she might be on mute. Uh, we'll come back to that. All right, um, so we-
I'm only, I'm only saying that because if it was the select, it, that's way over first for the select.
No, it's not. It's a Calif-, California Route 1.
Ooh.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second.
That's a great question.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, congratulations on, hopefully, ordering a new car tomorrow.
Nobody jinxed me.
Um, discussion impossible, motion to set dates for 2024 budget meetings. Yee-haw.
Oh, we skipped one.
Oh, I did. Oh, consider approval, no.
Poor Karen.
Oh, consider approval in Environmental Advisory Council, EAC requests to host a tree giveaway event at a cost not to exceed $2,500. And, uh, I think-
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second that. It's a great idea.
So Karen, I'm gonna put you on hot seat.
Come on up and give us a talk.
So the EAC wanted to, um, offer 50 native trees to township residents. Um, they're a decent-sized tree, they're, they're small because it's actually, studies have shown that smaller trees are actually grow faster due to, um, the, the root ball not being disturbed as much, and they, they will grow faster than a tr-, a larger tree with a disturbed root ball. But, um, 50 trees, we're proposing to give them away on October 21st, um, hopefully at the Township Building. Plan to advertise it, um, via Facebook, EAC Facebook, the newsletter, um, and hopefully get the word out with the township, uh, like a little neighborhood group, email groups. Um, they're all native trees, they all support local wildlife, and we're hoping that we get a good turnout and that they get planted in our township and help improve the water retention and all of that.
I'll let others get first dibs, but if there's a few that aren't spoken for, I'd love to put a couple on my property.
That sounds good.
Well, I think, I think-
One per house.
All right, I, I'll take that back. I'd love to put one on my property. Yeah, uh, but I do know some folks on, uh, North Spring Lane that might enjoy getting some-
This is our first attempt. Um, we are starting with 50 trees. Um, if it's successful, we would like to continue to do it, to use the EAC budget, because that's why we have a budget to-
Great.
-use it to improve the environment.
I mean, it's the honor system. I mean, yeah, we would hope that if someone took the time to come to the, to pick up a tree. We will give, um, educational material and best practices for planting a tree and, um, information about where each tree is best planted, like if it's in a sunny location or shady location.
And this is a great time of year to plant trees.
Yes, exactly. Fall is the best time.
Great call, Karen. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank the EAC for forward-thinking on that. All right, so there is a, uh, motion, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, uh, then discussion impossible motion to set dates for 2024 budget.
Okay.
Problem I have. So excited about checking things out. All right, what are we looking at for the calendars, guys?
So typically, we plan the October workshop meeting for our budget meeting, and then generally, we schedule one extra. Um, if things go as they did last year, we didn't need a second one. So what we can do, and what I would suggest, because we just scheduled the special meeting for the Reeves' property, is that we sched-, we plan budget for the October workshop, and we're going to cover the fire department budget at the September workshop meeting. So we'll have already reviewed that. And we could also, as we did last year, we could cover at the October business meeting, the police budget, and kind of split it up that way, rather than scheduling an additional meeting. If it becomes, I think we'll have an indication as to whether or not we're gonna need another meeting, but I don't anticipate that, that we will. We'll hit those big-
I was just saying that.
Fire and police are the big, generally, so if that works for everybody.
So you're gonna do the police on the, on October 11th?
Subject to me talking to the chief about that, but it, that's the same way we, we had done it last year.
And then do the overall budget on October 26th?
Yes, at the regular workshop meeting.
Okay.
If that's okay with everybody. But we'll also cover, now unfortunately, Martha and Susan, you'll miss this, but we can give another u-, update, but the fire, we're gonna review the fire department's budget at the September workshop.
Yeah.
But we can talk, we can talk about it again. We'll go through the meeting treaty.
And then in November, uh, at our November board meeting is when we would advertise it.
Correct.
And then our December board meeting, we would prove it.
Correct.
Is that cutting things too tight?
Nope, we're okay.
All right, I've got it at 7 o'clock. Is that what time we're still looking at for the workshop?
7 o'clock for the workshop, correct.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, and then the next meeting, I'll make sure I have that in here, would be November. What date do we have for the next meeting?
October 11th.
Is the business meeting.
Right, so we've got the police covered there.
Yep.
Then October.
And October 26th would be the overall budget.
Got it.
And we're doing that at 7?
Correct, yes.
And we feel that's enough that in the November 8th meeting?
November 8th.
November 8th, we will advertise prelim.
Gotcha.
And then adopt. It's the exact same schedule that we did last year.
Excellent. Make motion, uh, guess that we, do I need to make a motion?
No, you don't have to, actually, because we're not scheduling any special meetings.
Good. All right, moving on. Resolution ordinances. Consider adoption of ordinance number 2023-01 authorizing execution of Comcast Cable franchise agreement.
We advertised this?
Yes, we did. We missed your motion line there, sorry.
Yeah, okay. I was gonna say, I'm, I'm looking at this thinking there's discussion, and I'm wondering, all right, well, I'll make a motion, we, uh, move on.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Two-minute reports, board liaisons. Mark?
Planning Commission was more involved in our, we talked about them a half, wasn't it, Mike?
All right. Susan, anything to report?
No, just a tricky one, we covered it.
All right. Danielle, your seat's empty, but anything to report?
No, no, I wasn't at the Regional Planning Commission meeting the last meeting, and unfortunately, I'm sorry, I didn't, uh, touch base with Barbara Cohen for an update. She, she did attend.
Okay, good. Martha, anything to report?
The Open Space Commission nor the Historical Commission met this month, so no.
All right.
Oh, uh, Martha, the, the tree plant, the tree, um, lighting for domestic violence month, did you, did you mention that? Or do we have a date?
Yes, that's on the announcements.
It's, it'll be on the announcement.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. I'm ahead of myself.
Excellent. Township manager?
Yes, uh, just very briefly, uh, this Friday, there will be a road closure on Jug Hollow Road, as we have a contractor coming in to clean out the culvert. We also had our first meeting with the architects, starting our feasibility study, so we're very excited about that. Um, so we are expecting at the October workshop meeting, so directly before we get into our budget hearing, they will make their, tentatively, if all goes as planned, which I think it will, they'll make their initial report. It'll be a 15-minute presentation to the board, but I thought it would be a good time. It, they'll be able to give us not numbers, but a general concept of what we might be looking at. That's when they'll be able to present our needs, basically. They'll have our needs analysis done at that point. So October 26th, they'll come before the board, but you'll start seeing over the next couple of weeks, the reports that they're putting together. So we just had our kickoff meeting yesterday.
You said October 26th, in October or September?
October.
October.
Uh, I might have said the wrong number di-, it's our, whatever our workshop is.
In October.
October, October, Chris. Okay, did I say, yeah?
Okay.
So we'll have them go first. It'll be brief, and then we'll get into our budget hearing. But yeah, but we're excited about it. It was a very good first meeting.
Good. Paul?
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, as the board is aware, Doley Construction for Paul Lehman Drive has submitted a pay application, uh, number two to the township. Uh, we have asked for them to go through some punch list items, which, uh, we've asked for a couple times now, and they, they're, I assume they're busy with the end of the year, or, I shouldn't say end of the year, end of the summer and the good warm weather to do things. So they've been kind of pushing it off to do the punch list, which will also push off us giving the pay app. So, uh, we did reach out to Matt Epler with Doley, uh, and he said he's gonna try to organize something. We just asked that if they're gonna go through, they have to have representatives there, and we want to open up some manholes and things like that, that we haven't been able to inspect to date. So as soon as we get that through, we can finish up, uh, finalize the punch list, and then can get a payout to Lori for-
How heavy is the punch list? Were there major concerns in any areas?
No, there, there aren't. It's, it's, it's minor little items. Uh, the, the biggest question is that the, uh, some of the storm structures have manhole lids, and, and they've sealed them, so we can't get down to go do the investigation. So until, until we can go through and verify that. Again, they've said that they've gone and have cleaned up a lot of stuff, but, um, we wanna, we wanna pop the lid and go down, take a look ourselves.
How much money's left in the, um, escrow?
The escrow, I think it's probably about, I think their payout's about $300,000. Is that just about it, Lori? I think I forget. I haven't looked at, I apologize. I haven't looked at it in a couple months, because they submitted, and we said we have to do our punch list.
And I'm surprised that they're sitting on that kind of money. That's a bit bizarre. Okay.
I, I mentioned that to my design team all the time.
Do that.
Because all you need is some labors on a couple rainy days to go out there and take a look at this, but.
All right, thanks, Paul. Fire. Tom, have anything to report?
I'm sorry, you're gonna escape my suite.
No. All right, put you on first last time, but-
You control how long you talk now, so.
I, I've already excluded the jokes about replacement vehicles with 550s. Uh, 24 calls for the month, 116 members responded, 87 hour, excuse me, 87 members in training for 234 hours, uh, three community outreach events for a total of 153 man-hours in service in the community. Uh, average manpower per response, uh, eight and a half, there's eight and a half members with an average response time of seven and a half minutes. Uh, October 9th is our fire prevention open house. Usually a great turnout. Love to see you guys come out and support us, we can show ourselves off.
What's the date?
October 9th, what time?
Um, October 14th is our lasagna sale, and November 4th, uh, is the bi-annual breakfast. Uh, other than that, we're looking forward to showing ourselves off and presenting for the workshop later on this month, and showing you what we've been up to with the consult. So, questions?
How do you spell lasagna? I botched it through. Oh, no, there it goes. Auto correct.
I'll have to order that a week in advance.
I'm ordering it tomorrow. Can I order it tomorrow, or do I have to wait a while longer?
Not much yet.
Consider this an order.
And then it's pretty stale on the end.
Can, can you get us times for those events?
Uh, we've seen already.
Oh, you got them already?
So if I order that on the 6th, I'm good. If I gotta order by the 6th or 7th, all right. I have to put a reminder on my calendar, because every year, I'm like, damn it, I didn't do it.
Now, a real Sicilian wants to know, do you use the Easy-Bake noodles, or do you boil the noodles? I mean, that's-
I'll tell you.
Whatever makes the sale.
That, that's a threshold question there.
All right, well, a real Irishman tells her they are ass-kicking good. And I just have to send Carolyn an invite, so she gets the reminder to actually order them.
Announcements.
Boom, done. All right. Uh, discussion, additional business, discussion of agenda items for upcoming workshop meetings. I think we covered that already.
Yeah.
Announcements. Do we-
Who has those?
I got a list of those here somewhere, or do I? Announcements. On Monday, September 18th, 2023, at 7 o'clock, Home Energy Savings 101 Workshop will be held at East Pike Glen Township Building, 1158 Rapsdam Road, Phoenixville. This is a free workshop, learn about home energy saving options from Pico rep Mike Schneller. All attendees will receive a free home energy assessment. That's a big deal. Registration is required for participation. On Tuesday, October 10th, 2023, at 6:45, the Domestic Violence Center of Chester County will host a tree lighting ceremony, Light the Night for Hope and Healing, on the grounds of the Schuylkill Township Municipal Complex. So October 10th, 6:45. And I think that's it for announcements. And public comment, anybody have anything to say that they haven't yet? All right, with-
I saw the date of that Pico thing last again.
Uh, Pico is September 18th at 7 o'clock at the Municipal Township Building on Rapsdam Road. I go, but they're gonna tell me things I don't want to hear.
Sorry, Denver. Why do you make them wait and go last? Two-minute reports happen at the end.
Oh, okay.
It's just, it's just been that way, but I also, I wondered that tonight, like, for, you know, but anyway, we'll come back to that and maybe talk about it down the road. All right, with that, if there's no other discussion, I motion-
I just had, I just have one very, very quick, quick, quick thing. I did talk about this with Lori, um, just an agenda item for a future workshop, or, yeah, workshop meeting. Um, I think we need to start to talk about, um, um, like, emergency management situations and what our public should know, and things like that. Um, we have a railroad that has hazardous materials, um, we have flooding, we've had wildfires. Everybody talks about how their emergency management operations are a hot mess, and this person's being sued in Hawaii, and this other person's being sued up in New York. Um, I don't want that to happen here. I want our public to be made really well-aware of what our emergency situations are, and who they need to listen to, and what happens in specific situations. And I think it would be a really nice idea to have that as a future workshop meeting.
I think that's a great idea, Martha.
What?
I think that is a great idea, Martha, and you also have a big dam in your township, too.
Yeah, and we had a threat a few years back, yes.
May I make your recommendation that we use that for one of your presentation lines at the country club, rather than a workshop?
That's a great idea.
Or even as a workshop.
Uh, you know what? I just wanted to throw it out there. I don't really care where we do it. I think it's something that needs to be discussed, and that's a great idea. So, I have no-
Yeah, let's get some usage.
Yeah.
We're all papered up, so we're ready to go.
All right.
Cool.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Bob.
I'm sorry. You're still in leader mode.
Good evening, John Maras. Um, Martha, in case what you're talking about, I brought up the subject a while ago about the police department, or someone notifying us on Meadowbrook Lane if there was an incident at the school. And I was told there was come, that would come through the Chester County Police Department, or that service. So if, you know, the na-, the parents and all those people are notified, if there's an active shooter or anything like that, but we on Meadowbrook Lane was told, we can't be brought into that with the school district. So what you're talking about, is it going to go through the Chester County website? Just like I got notification that they got the guy yesterday, and I got notification from Chester County.
That's the emergency service.
Right. So what you're talking about, is that gonna be the same thing?
Does it all have to be discussed?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
You know what, I think, I think this- You know, I think, I think this is, this is the kind of questions that, that can be brought up, so that we all know who, who...
So that's the, yeah, like, that's the reverse 911 service, and that's, that's like, things like when the dam was potentially gonna break, or like, talking about the, the guy who escaped, or, or things like that, but yeah, that's, that's stuff that we can talk about in a future session, about how it's, like, just the, the avenue where it's done.
I agree, because like you said...
Like, where does that information come from?
Right, parents are notified, but anybody in the neighborhood of the schools, what do we wait for?
Right.